And we've opened the meeting so we can start letting applicants in, right?
Yes, and we're live on YouTube and we're recording.
Okay. And we've opened the meeting so we can start letting applicants, right?
Right.
Yes, and we're live on YouTube and we're... So Edith and Corey, I'll let you, let me know when everybody's in.
The first item, applicants and staff.
They're in, okay, great. All right, welcome back to the afternoon session of the February 23 public hearing. And we are going to start our afternoon session with item number six. And this hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube. So if you're interested in watching the proceedings, please visit our YouTube channel where you can watch the livestream. If you would like to testify on any of the hearing items this afternoon, please join the meeting at the estimated time for that item as shown on the hearing agenda. And that hearing agenda can be found on our website. And with that, I'll turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, to lead us through the agenda this afternoon. Corey?
Thanks, thanks, Sarah. So we'll start back up with item number six. This is LPC 21-02744, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 640, lot 53, 334 West 12th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. A transitional Greek Revival Italianate-style residence built between 1853 and 1854, and the application is to install a cornice.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please remember to unmute yourself, state your name for the record.
Hello, this is William Green. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have a property located at 334 West 12th Street. The building was built as one of three, with the two sister buildings directly to its east at 330 and 332 West 12th Street. At some point in, or around 1949, a fourth story was added to our property. And at that time that the fourth story was added, the original cornice had been removed. And the property has been in that current condition from that point to the present day. Our client is interested in installing a cornice to the facade where one currently does not exist in order that the building be more closely akin aesthetically to its neighbors, both to the east and to the west. Our application is for the installation of a cornice, and we are illustrating that cornice on the third slide. I'm not seeing that presentation.
Mr. Green, are you, are you advancing the slides? If you click on the screen with your mouse, you should be able to advance the slides.
Um, Sarah, Sarah, not to interrupt, but I believe it's his colleague, Alexander Woodman, who should be advancing the slides.
We're, we're speaking from the same office, so Alex can hear me as I'm speaking.
Okay.
Hopefully that, that slide has appeared, and you can see our proposal for the, for the cornice. The cornice that we're proposing is a fiberglass cornice. It's manufactured by company Edon.
Sorry to interrupt, but I, I don't have control of the slides.
You just need to click on the screen that you see in front of you, and then advance using the mouse for arrow keys.
Do we have the slide up?
Yeah, the slides are up.
Okay. So I believe everyone has seen the designation, the historical photos, the designation photo, and now the illustration of the proposed cornice.
I think you'll have to walk through the slides again. I, I think there just was such a delay in getting them going that you, as you spoke, we didn't have any visuals, so.
Okay, let's start at the beginning then. The first slide will indicate the historic photograph of the property of 330, 332, and 334, our property, West 12th Street. Everybody sees that. And then on or about 1949, on the second slide, everyone should be able to see the fourth floor having been added to the property without the cornice that had been removed at the time the fourth floor had been added. And the property's been in this current condition since that time. Our client's interest is to install a cornice so that it will be a better neighbor aesthetically to those properties to its east and to its west. And our proposal is illustrated on the third slide. We are proposing a cornice that is made of fiberglass. With, the intention is for it to be installed and painted black. The corbeling is quite closely in scale to the corbels of the adjacent properties. The location of the corbels flanking each side of the, of the fourth-story windows is in keeping with the design of the adjacent properties. And that's our proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, so the, this is one of, a row of three, the end of the three, and it was raised sometime after the tax photo, and it, the cornice was removed, was raised an additional floor, and no cornice was added. So the proposal is to add a cornice that is similar in design to the adjacent cornices. And I believe the building on the right other side of you is slightly taller than the remainder of your row, correct?
That is correct. And its cornice, as you can see from the photograph, exists below the top of the masonry, which is unique.
Right, it has a rooftop addition. Okay, any, any questions, commissioners? Okay, let's, why don't we see if we have any public testimony? If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Director, Lee Suckersavage, to walk us through the testimony. Great, thank you. We had one person sign up, and I see his hand raised, John Graham. And John, I brought you in.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society. The Victorian Society in New York supports the installation of a cornice of this altered building. The applicant has provided a copy of the designation photo from the 1960s showing that the fourth floor had been added to this building prior to designation, and that the work done at that time included removing the historic cornice from above the windows on the third floor and building a minimally detailed parapet. They've also given us a copy of the tax photo showing the original cornice, and photographs showing that a number of this building's neighbors have handsomely detailed cornices. The VSNY finds that installing the new cornice at the modern parapet will not conceal any original historic material, and that it will be similar to the design proportions and painted finish of the original cornice. Furthermore, the addition of the cornice will help to unify the streetscape on this block where historic cornices remain strong presence. But we would like to suggest an alternate for consideration, the installation of the proposed cornice back in its original location, above the windows on the third floor, with a secondary, more simply detailed cornice at the top of the building. This architectural cadence in the form of two cornices would complete the composition of this handsome house and would reinforce its connections to its two neighbors and minimize the impact of the bare parapet, which now detracts from the building and the streetscape. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised. Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from the Community Board, and they recommended denial, stating that it is an unsuitable material, excuse me, an unsuitable material and a design unfeitting to the building's history.
Okay, Mr. Green, would you like to address the comments that you heard, both from the spoken testimony as well as the Community Board's comments?
Certainly, it'd be my pleasure. Again, our, our client's interest is strictly voluntary. I think everybody should be aware of that, but I want to emphasize that point, that their intention is to add a cornice in order to make their property a better aesthetic neighbor to its adjacent properties and the street. The comment from the Community Board with respect to the fiberglass cornice, we found we were quite pleased to have found a product that we thought would be appropriate, both in terms of its scale, its proportion, and its configuration to the intention of the original cornice and the adjacent properties. We believe that once installed, the fiberglass cornice, when painted black, will be imperceptibly the same as the neighboring cornices. The material itself should not really enter into a factor, given its consideration for approval or denial. And we feel as though the fiberglass cornice will allow the contractor and client to install this in a, in a way that is both affordable and aesthetically appropriate. And we've certainly been working with them to gain their, their desire and intent to install this cornice as opposed to leaving the facade the way it is presently. In terms of the design, it is true that it's not an exact match to the cornices from the properties to our east as part of the original suite of townhouses, but we weren't necessarily looking for an exact replication, given the fact that we're on the fourth floor, that the location of the cornice is not as per the original. And we felt as though the proportion, the design was quite close and appropriate, and it would recognize that this is a new addition, not the original cornice. With respect to the gentleman's comments from the Victorian Society, the suggestion adding two cornices, well, I can say that's certainly something that we would look at if that's something that is being requested of us. Given the space between the third and fourth floor, we think that might look quite awkward, the space between the fenestration and the cornice as exists to the neighboring properties, we would not be able to maintain that dimension. And it could look more like a mistake than what I understand the intention to be. And we feel as though the fourth floor with a cornice addition would really work quite well on the street, and I think everybody will ultimately be much happier with that cornice the way we have proposed it.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a question, Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead.
Thanks, Sarah. I just wanted to ask, Mr. Green, what, what's the warranty period for the fiberglass cornice?
I don't have the answer to that exactly, but it was certainly conveyed to us and during our research that there's no reason that, once installed, given proper weeping and so forth, that it could not be as permanent as, if not more so than, a wood cornice. That was the primary issue that we were looking at in terms of its installation, to make sure that moisture could be properly vented from the cornice, and we have a detail for that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'm going to start requesting to unmute all of you so that we can make a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, as was presented, this is a building that was altered, and the, you know, Commission has found a cornice on raised buildings in the new location to be appropriate because there's aesthetic value to cornices, but also a functional value as well in protecting the facade from water infiltration. So for functional and aesthetic reasons, we've, we've seen other buildings in this and other districts that have been raised over time, and we've approved cornices atop them. And we also have approved alternate materials in cornices on buildings of this size if there are, there's enough detail to hide the seams and it has a painted finish. So that's something else we can think about. I see there's a note on the drawing that the panel seams are to be concealed behind the scrolls, behind the brackets. So that's something one could think about as well as we discuss this project. So let me see, Diana, I don't think you've led yet, so Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start with this one?
Okay, I think in general that it's an excellent idea to replace the cornice, and that was their historic, it won't be the same historically, but that will make the building more contextual on the row. And I think it just, do you have the applicant work with his staff on details such as those you were just discussing to make sure that it is the most, done in the most appropriate way? But I think it's, I'm, you know, I believe we should approve this.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree. I, the only thing I would, I mean, we've done, we've done fiberglass cornices up at the, up at this height before with this level of detail. I mean, it's not the best solution, but I think it's an acceptable solution. And the only thing I would suggest, they work with staff on those panels under the overhanging cornice at the very ends, they would never have them installed like that where they're kind of just sliced. And if you look at the adjacent buildings, they also omit them at the ends so that the brick kind of goes up at the ends. It's just a more traditional detail, and it'll look better.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's acceptable. If I may interject an anecdote, we, when we restored the Battery Maritime Ferry Terminal, we called for replacement of some of the cast iron sheathing with new cast iron, and the construction management firm said, no, no, we're gonna, we're gonna replace it with fiberglass. They were only able to get a one-year warranty on the fiberglass glating for that, and, and they searched everywhere. So I'm, I'm generally not a big fan of fiberglass on historic buildings. You don't have to replace them in wood, you can replace them in sheet metal, which, you know, has a performance life of about 75 years. The, the problem with fiberglass is people think you can just paint it and then don't have to worry about it again, but fiberglass starts to deteriorate under UV light. So you're not really saving yourself a lot of trouble here. In any case, aesthetically, because they have been thoughtful enough to put the, the seams behind the brackets, which is also a big issue with fiberglass, again, I can begrudgingly accept it.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with the two, Commissioner says two micro, it's not the ideal solution, it's acceptable.
Okay, Commissioner Lutfee?
If Michael begrudgingly approves, that I can go along with it. But I do want to thank the applicant for taking the initiative to do something that's not only going to enhance the building from a functional and an aesthetic standpoint, but is also going to tie it together with the, the other buildings alongside it on the block. And I agree that the applicant should work with staff to ensure that all the details make sense in terms of installation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Good neighbor, material technically acceptable.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yep, appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think it's appropriate, too.
Okay, great. So I think we have a consensus to approve. I do think that you should consider Commissioner Devonshire's point that the fiberglass may still require maintenance and, you know, that you, and that it might not save you that much in the end if you wanted to consider sheet metal cornice. But we do have approval for the proposal as presented today, so we'll go ahead and, and make that motion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
Yes, thank you. In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, LPC 21-02744, 334 West 12th Street, Greenwich Village Historic District. A transitional Greek Revival Italianate-style residence built between 1853 and 1854. Application is to install a cornice. I recommend, I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I further note that the historic cornice was removed and a fourth story added to the building between 1940 and 1967. I recommend approval, finding that historically, cornices on row houses have served as decorative terminal elements as well as features that protect facades from the weather. And the proposed cornice will be in keeping with that tradition. That the proposed cornice will be located four stories above the sidewalk, and therefore the fiberglass material with a painted finish will be consistent with the appearance of traditional painted wood and metal cornices found in the streetscape. That the rhythm of proposed brackets relates to the rhythm of the historic cornice found with the two adjacent buildings in the row. That this subtle change in the design of the brackets will differentiate the proposed cornice from the historic cornices, acknowledging the presence of the additional floor adding to the, adding to the building prior to designation. That the cornice will be painted and jointly replaced adjacent to the projecting brackets, thereby minimizing the visible differences in the non-traditional material and methods of installation. And that the proposed work will support the long-term preservation of the building and the special architectural and historic character of the building and historic district. However, I also recommend that the applicant work with his staff regarding the material, the configuration, and the details of the proposed cornice.
Right. Diana, I think we're actually approving the fiberglass, but asking them to just work with the staff on the final details.
Okay.
As part of the motion.
Yeah, work with the staff on the final details.
Yeah, and then, you know, but if they want to reconsider the material, of course, we would approve a sheet metal, and they may find that that's a better alternative. But the motion is to approve the fiberglass in this location with modifying the details.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to put that for consideration. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Sorry, can you repeat that?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, there was a, there was a cough in the background. Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfee?
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, so that's approved, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you all very much.
Hey, Commissioners, please note that the next two applications are for advisory reports related to the construction of a new building on the old Commodore Hotel site, now the Hyatt Hotel adjacent to Grand Central Terminal. This site is not designated, LPC has no formal jurisdiction over the new building. The project's also one of the first bigger projects to come out of the East Midtown rezoning. While it does, this zoning does encourage state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art office construction, it also requires many public benefits, which will be discussed as part of the presentation. Therefore, there are many requirements and other city agencies involved in this project. And in addition, the Public Design Commission will actually have binding jurisdiction over the design. So I'll now read in the, the next two items somewhat jointly, but again, this will be all under one presentation. And it's items seven and eight, docket numbers LPC 21-05602 and 21-05603, address 71 to 105 East 42nd Street, Grand Central Terminal individual and interior landmarks, the Borough of Manhattan, block 1280, lot 1. Again, both are for advisory reports. The first is for advisory review pursuant to zoning resolution section 81-60 concerning the harmonious relationship of a new building and Grand Central Terminal. The second is an application for an advisory report to alter the viaduct sidewalk and the 42nd Street passage to connect an adjacent new building.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. I do now have control.
Okay, thanks. So just before we get started, I, I just want our General Counsel to speak to the types of, there are two different types of reports, as Corey said, and I, I just want our General Counsel to address that before the applicants begin.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, just as Corey indicated, the, the application before you is seeking a report to the City Planning Commission concerning the harmonious relationship of the new building being built adjacent to Grand Central but, but in a non-designated site, is pursuant to the zoning resolution, which is why it's advisory. We are just, we're required under the zoning resolution to provide this report. With respect to the, the other application dealing with the interior work in Grand Central and on the viaduct, we are advisory there because the terminal is owned by the MTA, which is a public authority, and as such, is not subject to local landmark jurisdiction. That said, I mean, they instead are subject to review by SHIPPA. That said, the MTA has come forth and seeks LPC Commissioners' comments on the proposed work connecting these, the new construction, the new building with Grand Central. So that's why it's advisory, that technically they don't have to come to us at all, but they are coming to us in this advisory capacity.
Okay, thank you. And we'll now turn it over to the applicants.
Thanks very much, Chair Carroll, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. And, and all the Commissioners, it's great to be with you. I'm Jeff Nelson with RXR Realty, I lead our public-private partnerships. We're partnered with TF Cornerstone on the development of 175 Park at the site of the Grand Hyatt. Just to touch on RXR and TF for a minute, we're firms with, with deep histories and experience in New York, and we're really long-term, multi-generational owners and holders of real estate with a real commitment to the city and its success. Our work spans both commercial and residential projects, including a number of high-profile public-private partnerships that we've undertaken over the years. We also have a lot of We also have a lot of experience with landmarks and historically significant buildings in the city. So TF owns Carnegie Hall Tower and oversaw that project. And within RXR's portfolio, we own the New York Central Building, known today as the Helmsley Building, and actually the first terminal city office building that was constructed by Grand Central. And we also own 75 Rockefeller Plaza and the Starrett Lehigh Buildings and undertook significant renovations of both. And then finally, we're currently overseeing the renovation of 550 Madison after its designation in 2018 as a landmark and are very proud of our work there. Turning to the agenda, as Mark mentioned, you know, we're obviously pleased to be at LPC. At this point, we do have the two items that Mark mentioned to review with you. The application is first for the harmonious report related to our building and its relationship to Grand Central. And then also the appropriateness report regarding improvement on the Grand Central Lot itself. So just to turn to our site specifically and give you a little bit of the context. You all know it well, but we're located at the corner of 42nd and Lex and share a block with Grand Central Terminal. There's really perhaps no other site in Manhattan that we think has as much potential to contribute both to the public realm and to our transit system. We sit directly adjacent to the terminal, and in many ways, the site is an extension of the terminal with transit connections and public connections that run from the terminal through our building to the subway below our building and the surrounding streets. And much as the as the tracks beneath Grand Central inform the construction of the terminal itself, you'll see in our presentation how the circulation elements and the infrastructure both present challenges and opportunities for our site as we approached it. Looking at 42nd Street today, it would be hard to find a site that has more untapped potential than the Grand Hyatt. I think we all know how we got here. But to briefly recap, you know, in 1980, a well-known New York developer shaved down the exterior of the old Commodore Hotel and gave us what we have today. This building, as you can see on the next slide, you know, in its design and orientation is imposing and it's foreboding. As you can see, it sits on the lot line and and actually goes beyond that. It cantilevers over 42nd Street and presents a fairly foreboding presence. The impact is probably most prominent with respect to Grand Central Terminal. It obscures views of the terminal's eastern facade. And at street level, it clearly clashes with its kind of magnificent Beaux-Arts neighbor, which is really one of the most important landmarks in the city, if not the most important landmark. Unfortunately, that relationship extends to the interior as well. There are severe challenges with pedestrian circulation and access to the transit network. What you see on the slide is that famously kind of congested entrance along the 42nd Street Passage down into the subway mezzanine. That subway mezzanine and entrance to the 456 actually sits on the Grand Hyatt property. So in the second part of this presentation, you'll see how we improve this condition through the introduction of a transit hall and expanded subway entrance as part of our project. So how are we addressing the current condition? So the proposed project is the demolition of the current functionally obsolete hotel and the construction of a new mixed-use office building and hotel. As I mentioned, the project will have significant transit improvements and also public realm improvements, and we'll touch on some of those today. You know, when we first embarked on the project, it's self-evident, but obviously we recognized immediately the importance of designing a building that respected and sought harmony with Grand Central and that responded to its place next to the terminal. That's why we brought on SOM and Bayer Blender Bell. And we think we've really drawn inspiration from Grand Central. You'll see that, we think, through the engineering, design, and materiality and other details that are included in our project. But this is also a building that stands, we think, in its rightful place as a very carefully designed and contemporary building. It embraces the vision of East Midtown and the intent of the East Midtown rezoning. And it also builds on the legacy of Terminal City. We think it does that through the delivery of its public spaces, which we believe will be world-class, the transit upgrades to provide connection to the terminal, and also the construction of a a modern hotel and office building that meet the needs of a 21st century workforce. We're very proud of the work that's been done. We think this is an incredibly important project, not just for TF Cornerstone and RXR, but also for New York City. As we emerge from this pandemic, hopefully there's light at the end of the tunnel. We really think this project can signal the continued strength and resiliency of New York and the very bright prospects for the city's recovery in the future of East Midtown. So I'd like to turn it over to Frank Pryle at BBB and Rami Abu-Khalil from SOM to walk you through the design. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. I just want to confirm everyone can hear me?
We can hear you, Frank.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Hello, Commissioners and everyone. I am Frank Pryle. I'm a principal with Bayer Blender Bell Architects, the firm that hired me over 25 years ago to work on the restoration of Grand Central Terminal. And in one way or another, I've been working in and around GCT ever since. I was considering that project just yesterday, in fact, last night, as I was reviewing my comments for the hearing today. And it occurred to me that there was a special meaning in the term that was applied to that project. It was not simply a renovation or a restoration. It was a revitalization, and that word was chosen very carefully. And and I think it's still appropriate and important today. The reason is that it was more than just, the project was more than just the renovation of public spaces and passageways. It was, and also more than just the, you know, the restoration of ornament and plaster and stone. I think that with a very few bold and carefully considered moves, this essential building and the 42nd Street Midtown area around it were given new life. In other words, they were revitalized. And it occurred to me last night, really, as I was reviewing all of these ideas and thoughts, that that's why I'm so excited about the project that we're presenting to you today. Because more than any of the other projects I've been involved in in those 25 years that I've begun working at Grand Central, it presents similar opportunities, I think, on a similar scale to address some very evident deficiencies and inefficiencies, both within the building but also in the Midtown area around it. And gives us an opportunity to to re-revitalize, if you will, both the terminal and this this Midtown District. So as as Mark and Jeff mentioned, we're here today because we have applied for two items, which I think could be very broadly simplified to the very big picture and also, which is the harmonious relationship, and also the very precise. And those are the very specific elements of modification that will be described to you in in greater detail. And the presentation that you'll see in a moment in the defense of these requests is very rich and thoughtfully considered. And I think that that is what impressed me and excited me the most. When I first saw it, when they first, the team first reached out to me to participate in this project over a year ago, the amount of research into Grand Central that the designers from SOM had done, the questions that they asked of me about the building, the very clear and deliberate application of those ideas, made me very confident that this project would have many benefits for the terminal and not just be another developer project. So what are some of these elements and ideas that characterize GCT? And not to go into a long dissertation, but I think it's important to identify the most important. Why have they been so influential? Most important, I think, is its unique and successful balance of the architectural and functional characteristics and the many tours I give to the building on a regular basis to students and visitors and interested people. I like to describe GCT as a very efficient machine dressed in elegant formal clothing. And the result all of this comes from is this contentious collaboration sometimes between the designers. Every good team has a little creative friction built into it. Whitney Warren was rigorous and disciplined classicist. He worked with Beaux-Arts principles of scale and proportion, ornamentation, solid and void, rich material palette, things like this, careful detailing to create a building of great presence and monumentality. And then also as well, the great genius of Grand Central is what we really can't see sometimes and what we can't, what goes on inside. And that's the integration of extraordinarily complex transit infrastructure and the movement, the seamless movement and circulation within. So these are the lessons from Grand Central that I think have been directly learned and applied to the project that you will see. And with that, I'll hand off to Rami Abu-Khalil from SOM, who will go into great detail, hopefully answer your questions.
Thank you. And before you hand it over, I just want to note for the record that Fred Bland, Vice Chair Bland, is recused on this item and is not present for this presentation or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Rami Abu-Khalil. I'm part of the design team at SOM, who's had the privilege of working on this project. And I'm very excited to be sharing the design with you. We're going to start the discussion of the exterior of our building as it relates to the exterior of the terminal. We're going to start down at the base and the streetscape because that's where the harmonious relationship is at its most vital and its most important. The terminal was designed to sit like a freestanding object elevated up above the plinth. The current Grand Hyatt rises vertically right at the property line, and it crowds the eastern face of the terminal. Not just that, but as Jeff mentioned, it even cantilevers over the sidewalk on 42nd Street. It also features very little architectural scale at the level of the human scale along the sidewalk. And that's very vexing on this site specifically because 42nd Street really does feature a very distinctly human scale that responds to the pedestrians specifically. You can see it in almost all of the buildings around us. But most notably, you of course see it in the plinth of the Grand Central Terminal itself that you see here on the lower right. It concerns us the most because it really defines the character of the 42nd Street, of this stretch of 42nd Street, this block. So our project acknowledges this defining feature, this single-story plinth, and extends it into our site in order to preserve that human scale. As we'll explain later also, that extension is going to allow us the creation of an elevated public realm. We'll talk about that a little bit later. So the terminal is elevated above that plinth and is set back from the street, surrounded by circulation. And it features a characteristic rhythm of solids and voids in its facade. In a similar way, the core of our building will also sit above this extension of the plinth. It's going to be clad in a similar type of stone. It's going to also feature a rhythm of solids and voids as it gets punctuated by the elevator lobbies. And moreover, as you can see in plan, it's going to more or less align with the main body of the terminal. Both of them are going to be surrounded by these circulation spaces. So we think that this alignment really helps them read in resonance with each other, along with the materiality and along with this solid void language. Grand Central Terminal is one of the largest train stations in the world. And like many sites in Terminal City, we are sitting right above train tracks that serve the terminal. You can see it here with this looping track on the left. But this is a unique site in that it it features not only trains, but also subway tracks that cross diagonally across our site. So these are the 456 lines that are finding their way diagonally under our site and then up Lexington Avenue. So this site presented a unique engineering challenge from the beginning. How do you land a building here? In order not to affect the operation of these trains and subways, we've identified only two points along 42nd Street where we can successfully land structure without affecting, without affecting the train tracks. So we've taken the structure of the building, as you can see on the right side, and bundled it together in order to land on those two points that are available to us on 42nd Street. Now, the terminal expresses its structural peers on the facade. That's what gives it a sense of depth, a sense of relief, a sense of light and shadow. And we've also chosen to generate the architectural language of our building from the expression of these structural columns. They're also going to give the tower dimension, depth, relief. And the structural bundling of the columns will become very legible as it emerges from those load-bearing points, those two points along 42nd Street. And then it's going to track all the way up the rest of the tower, as we'll see when I describe the exterior of the building. So the structural solution helps us overcome the structural limitations of the site. And it reduces the footprint of the tower. And as it does so, it actually allows us to unlock its potential for the public. And it's going to contribute to the harmonious relationship with the terminal. As you can see here, any building that rises straight up from the property line will block views of the terminal as seen from from the corner of 42nd Street and Lexington. So pulling away from the property line and reducing the footprint of the building is going to help us reveal the terminal to pedestrians. So on the outside of the bulk. You can also here already get a sense of how we're going to use that to really invite the public around our. And not only that, but pulling, but the way that we're parting that structure also reveals the terminal through this now completely column-free lobby. So we're not only opening views on the outside, we're also opening views through the lobby, as you can see here. As we said earlier, the bulk of the Grand Hyatt where it currently sits really suppresses the reading of the terminal as an object sort of freestanding that you can really experience in the round. And so moving the bulk of our building away from the sidewalk really helps to experience that monumental corner that's such a feature of the terminal from the southern side of 42nd Street. The terminal's mass is the defining feature of this block, and we've paid particular attention to its proportions. And they've informed the way in which that we've detailed the base of our building. As you can see here, as the structure bundles its way down to terra firma, it creates a specific woven pattern with primary and secondary members. And these form meaningful alignments with defining features of the terminal, the Statue of Mercury above, the primary cornice line below. And so the size of the opening that's created is what is, is what then allows that visibility through the lobby that we saw earlier. But it's not so big that it overwhelms the scale of the terminal. We've been very careful to make sure that the proportion of the terminal is still the primary architectural dimension that you see on the block. So that opening is never larger than, never higher than the cornice line. A characteristic feature of Beaux-Arts architecture is the deployment of detail at multiple scales, from the scale of fenestration to the fluting on the windows, the profile of the building itself as well. And while our building is evidently, you know, firmly contemporary, we're also being very mindful of that and deploying detail at multiple scales as well. So here you see this hierarchy of primary and secondary columns that we've discussed earlier. And the way that within that, we're infilling an architectural louver that's going to add a secondary layer of detail as well. The terminal's architecture celebrates its columns, and it expresses them in the facade in these marching pairs. It highlights them with these very deep flutes that you can see here. And we're also very proud of our columns. We're featuring them with a subtle, a very subtle ribbing that adds texture as they descend towards pedestrians, as they descend towards the human scale. We're also working with our engineers to make sure that our columns are never so massive that they take away from the monumentality of the columns of the terminal itself. So we're using custom steel buildups. We're using the highest grade of steel available to us to make sure that we can get those columns to be as slender as we can get them. And indeed, right now, we're anticipating our columns will be in the four-foot-eight range, whereas the terminal's columns are much wider in the six-foot-four range. But we've been careful to design our columns so that they have that sense of relief, that strong sense of light and shadow. It's a facade that really has enough depth in it that we think is appropriate for a building that sits in this location next to the terminal. We don't want this to be a flat building. I think we've all seen that that doesn't work in a location like this. Those columns will be clad in a in a matte, very warm-toned painted metal panel. So the paint has a diffuse reflectivity that will avoid creating distracting specular reflections that could maybe cast reflectivity along, back onto the the terminal, for example, or create a kind of competing, competing reflections. So at the base of the building, we've tried to very closely observe the aesthetic ethos of the terminal, from this symmetrical balance, the attention to human scale, the ornamentation. And we've tried to apply these lessons in a contemporary way that we think will be harmonious with the terminal. And make no mistake, the terminal will retain its prominence and will continue to be the most attention-grabbing element when you approach it from the west. It's still the main architectural gem on this block. And we think the terminal's legibility as a freestanding object placed on the pedestal that is the viaduct remains clear and unaffected. Our building, you know, will always read as a backdrop to that. Moving a little bit further east, you can subtly start to understand that the scale of our gesture. that the scale of our gesture doesn't eclipse the terminal's prominence. You can also see the way in which we're extending this multi-level circulation logic that's such a characteristic of the terminal into our site. Once you start to see the way that we're extending the viaduct. And you start to understand that our building is peeling away from the terminal, creating a new space between our building and the terminal up at the level of the viaduct. You can also see that, like the terminal, our building is designed in the round. So it addresses the southeast and west sides. So it really is in a direct conversation with the terminal. As you can see in this image, the way that it peels away from the property line, creating that generous plaza above, puts it in direct conversation with the terminal. Moving further east, you can see the way that the corner is revealed. And we're very happy with the way that the terminal does indeed read like like a freestanding monument up on the plaza. Again, as a visual reminder, you know, the current tower sits somewhere out here. And, you know, we think from a pedestrian point of view, it really makes an enormous difference. And it really brings value visually to the building. Moving a little bit further east, you also start to see the way in which the terminal's eastern facade starts to become visible through this column-free lobby. And you can also start to see the way in which the core of our building resonates with the terminal. I think pedestrians will clearly understand that there's a sympathetic relationship there formally and in terms of the materials, in terms of the way that they're approximately aligned. We think that will be very perceptible to pedestrians and that they'll read it as sympathetic. You'll see the way we've kept our core very simple and very minimal. It's not overly detailed or ornamented in order not to compete with, but really just complement the terminal. Moving further east, you can see the way this single-story plinth is going to extend along Lexington Avenue and also support an elevated plaza above it. Moving further away, this corner will feature a secondary entrance into the building. And we're working very hard here to make sure that these muscular stone piers that support and receive the bundled columns from above are clearly legible so that the structural logic of the building is very evident to passersby. Here, we're on Lexington Avenue, looking south. And you can see again the continuity of that plinth, the way that it receives this very inviting public space above. And on the right, the way that it meets the one-story Grand Central Market. Below it is going to be a slew of public improvements, including a new entrance into the Lexington Passage, a new subway entrance, a sidewalk widening, and access to that terrace above. One Seventy Five Park will deliver a new paradigm for how to integrate outdoor public space in the dense fabric that is Midtown. Minimizing the footprint of our building allows us to surround it on all sides with public open space. This creates a continuous network of elevated plazas that's well in excess of the 10,000 square feet that's required by zoning. We're providing almost 24,000 square feet of publicly accessible open space here. Each one of these plazas is going to become a great new place to appreciate the landmark surroundings. But we're particularly excited, of course, about the, what we call the Grand Central Plaza, which is the plaza facing west towards the eastern facade of the terminal. That will become a great new place to really appreciate the terminal. These elevated plazas are reachable by two grand staircases along Forty Second Street and a second one along Lexington, as well as ADA elevators on both streets. The terrace sits above, the Grand Central Terrace sits above a transit hall that you see here seen from Forty Second Street. It's reachable by elevators and stairs, as we've seen earlier. And here I just want to point out the way in which we've paid very careful attention to the primary shadow lines of the Grand Central Plinths itself in order to extend it into our site in a way that, in a way that's compatible, but doesn't kind of confuse what's old and new. The stone cladding of the plinth, we're also still looking to identify, but we know it's going to be compatible with this spectrum. So between the Stony Creek pink granite of the, the lower plinth and the Indiana limestone of the actual terminal above. And the, once you're up there, you finally have a chance to appreciate the terminal's eastern facade, which has long been hidden from view on the relatively inhospitable viaduct. And so for the first time, you can appreciate the way that this eastern facade has just as much detail in it as the southern facade or the west facade of the terminal. But it's been so difficult to access all these years. This, the Grand Central Plaza will be, the Grand Central Terrace, sorry, will be a place for relaxation, contemplation. We think it offers a much-needed counterpoint to the terminal's hustle and bustle. It features both movable and fixed seating, trees, skylights to the transit hall below. And it's going to be separated from the viaduct with bollards that you can see on the left side of this image. Stairs at the northern end of the terrace will rise towards another elevated plaza towards the north. And that also allows the public a close look at the facade. And it really turns the facade of the terminal into a kind of backdrop for public space for the first time. We're working with James Corner Field Operation on the design of that landscape to make sure that the materials are sympathetic with the terminal and to make sure that there's certain formal languages here for elements like benches, et cetera, that really draw from the surrounding vocabulary. Grand Central is a famously symmetrical building. So in order for it to sit as comfortably as possible, in order for our tower to sit as comfortably as possible next to Grand Central, we felt strongly that the building had to also be symmetrical so that it's not looming or teetering over the terminal. We also felt strongly that the building should, like a very classical tripartite New York skyscraper, step back in successive tiers in order to preserve light descending to the streets below. This creates outdoor terraces for the future tenants of the building. And we know how important that is for the future of workplaces. And finally, it was very important for us not to make this a glass building. I've said it before, but it's worth repeating. We're expressing the structure on the exterior of the facade as a metallic lattice that just very gently and softly drapes over these very typically New York setbacks. So that's what's going to create depth and relief through the whole height of the tower. This draping also helps soften these setbacks and it creates a more contemporary, organic, very soft form. At the base, we're solving the infrastructural constraints that we discussed earlier with this bundling that hits Terra Firma in these two points. And then at the top, like the base, we're also resolving it in a kind of woven form that tapers in and also features round corners that can address the city in the round, like a sculptural object. When the terminal was built, it was an engineering feat that bridged the gash in the urban fabric and catalyzed the building of Midtown as we know it. We hope that the engineering feat that it's going to take to land One Seventy Five Park on this very complex site is going to be similarly legible to the public and unlock the site's potential, delivering dramatic new open spaces for the public, new transit improvements, and really valorize the terminal for the next century. This second part of the presentation, I'm going to summarize proposed improvements to Lot One specifically, so to the designated property. And we just spoke about the harmonious relationship of the exterior of the terminal. This second portion is concerned with appropriateness of the improvements that are undertaken to the designated landmark itself. And there are two parts to these improvements that I'm going to take you through. The first one is a sidewalk improvement at the viaduct level outside. And the second one is a removal of retail storefronts from the Forty Second Street passage inside at ground level in order to create connections between the Forty Second Street passage and a newly proposed transit hall. That's going to help the MTA achieve its desired increase in level of service. So starting with the sidewalk improvements, Lot One is the terminal lot. You're going to hear me refer, refer to it as Lot One. And Lot Thirty is the Grand Hyatt. So proposed improvements take place at the boundary between the two. Here you see the condition, the current condition at the viaduct. So Lot Thirty is everything within the Grand Hyatt's footprint. And everything outside of that is Lot One. In orange is the outline of the current sidewalk. What we're proposing is to, on the one hand, extend it, which is this zone you see in blue. And on the other, to improve the paving in this whole zone in pink in order to be sympathetic with the Grand Central Terrace that's going to be designed next to it. So we want those two things to read sympathetic to each other. Existing historical features like the historical guardrail that separates the Pew Place from Park Avenue on the left and the viaduct parapet itself will remain unaffected. This is an aerial view of that zone that we can return to as needed. The second portion of the Lot One improvements happen inside Forty Second Street passage. As a reminder, the Forty Second Street passage is within the boundary of the designated interior landmark. You can see that in this plan here. However, its current condition has been dramatically transformed since the original landmarking and this plan that you see before you. And the next, in the next few slides, I'm going to try to summarize the evolution of that Forty Second Street passage over time and how we got to where we are, and then what are proposed changes to it are. This plan is taken in the, in the nineties before the implementation of the Byard-Binder Bell master plan for Grand Central. I want to note here, the MTA, the entrance into the MTA, which is more or less in its current configuration here on the lower right. So this is this very congested zone that Jeff showed you earlier that we all know. I also want to point out the the MTA elevator that had obstructed even then the historic doors into the passage. And I want to point out the configuration of the passage as dramatically different than what it currently is. So you can see here, the, the width of the passage is split in two with a ramp that descended down to the Lower Concourse directly from Forty Second Street. And then a ramp that entered and then turned left into the Vanderbilt Hall, but not aligned with the Vanderbilt Hall axis. You can also see here that there is no oyster bar ramp, which is currently a beloved space. Byard-Binder Bell's master plan that was implemented in the late nineties was intended to consolidate and simplify circulation schemes within the terminal to better serve passengers' needs at the time. Most importantly here, I want to note the consolidation of the width of the passage. So they eliminated the split ramp configuration. And of course, the incorporation of retail lining the east side of the passage. That was not the case before that. I also want to note the new relationships. So the opening up of the oyster bar ramp that descended down to the Lower Concourse, that is now a beloved space, of course. And the realignment of the relationship between the Forty Second Street passage and Vanderbilt Hall to be aligned with the axis of Vanderbilt Hall in this kind of more classical Bozart's way. These are some before and after images. So here we're looking at the doors into the passage on Forty Second Street. So we're looking south towards Forty Second Street. And you can see how before the Byard-Binder Bell master plan, the space is split between two ramps. And on the right, the ramps were consolidated. Looking north from that same point on the left, again, those two ramps that really, you know, make the space unrecognizable to us and the absence of retail along the east side. And then afterwards, the condition that we more or less know today with the consolidation of the, of the width and the implementation of retail along the passage. These are images of the current condition that we can return to as needed. But again, notes that it, you know, the current configuration is more or less the result of the Byard-Binder Bell master plan. And in red here is the retail zone along the passage that will be subject to some of our modifications. So what is our project? What we're proposing is a new transit hall that will bring the turnstiles of the subway station up from the lower level mezzanine up to grade that will dramatically widen the capacity of the Forty Second Street passage in order to decongest it. That subway entrance will also be accessible directly from the street again in order to decongest the passage itself and decongest the terminal itself. And in order to achieve the desired improvement in level of service, we've been coordinating with the MTA on increasing porosity between the Forty Second Street passage and this new transit hall. So what we're proposing is two openings, each aligned with an existing axes coming in from the terminal. So one of them with the Vanderbilt Hall axis and one of them with the oyster bar ramp axis. So those will increase porosity between the passage and the new expanded transit hall. This is a summary slide that we can return to as needed that shows again, these changes sort of accumulating over time. Really, the only thing that I want to note here is that they've always aimed at consolidating and decongesting circulation. And, and you know, One Seventy Five Park is a, is a great opportunity to take this into the next century, you know, and really reinforce some of the goals that were set in place by the Byard-Binder Bell master plan. Here you see a current section through the subway access. So you see on the left is this very uncomfortable and very congested access down into the four, five, six mezzanine. This section is taken north, south. We're looking west towards the terminal. Forty Second Street is on the left side of the image. And this is our proposed section through the transit hall. So you can see that because the building is pulling away, our transit hall sits below the Grand Central Plaza that I showed you earlier. It's going to feature a direct entrance from Forty Second Street. So it'll have also direct visual access out to Forty Second Street, which is going to be great. And I want to point out the way in which we strategically placed our skylights in order to align with meaningful features of the exterior of the terminal. Mainly these beautiful bullseye windows that are such a, such a beautiful part of that facade. And this being a Bozart's building, we're very lucky that, of course, these meaningful features end up aligning with circulation axes. So, so this skylight aligns with that window, but also aligns with the Vanderbilt Hall axis, as I'll show you earlier. Later. This is a view within that transit hall. So right now, we're inside Lot Thirty. We're looking at the terminal beyond. You can see it. You can see the Forty Second Street passage back here. You can also see the terminal through these skylights. And you can see its eastern facade revealed with natural light streaming down. And so both the openings that are at play here that we're presenting to you are this one. That's the Vanderbilt Hall within the Vanderbilt Hall axis and that one, which is within the oyster bar ramp axis. Here you see the boundary between Lot One and Lot Thirty. The materials used in the transit hall will be sympathetic with those used in the Forty Second Street passage. But, but you'll clearly know that you've crossed a threshold outside of the historical boundary of the terminal and into a, a new space. The architectural language isn't identical, but it's sympathetic with the terminal. So this view is taken from the northern end of the hall, looking south towards Forty Second Street here in the distance. And this transit hall doesn't connect into our building in any way. It's just purely an extension of the transit systems. So these circulation portals that we're adding are designed specifically to give the MTA the porosity that it needs to achieve a higher level of service in this transit hall. And here you see the impact on the elevation of the Forty Second Street passage with these two openings that will replace retail storefronts where the oyster bar ramp is and where the Vanderbilt Hall ramp is. And this expanded opening just to the south of that. This is a view of the passage looking south towards Forty Second Street at the end. On the right is the oyster bar ramp. And again, note here, the natural hierarchy that ends up happening between the scale of circulation portals and the scale of retail storefronts that tend to read more like punched openings. And so our modifications are designed to continue to promote this kind of intuitive movement that happens within the terminal. So the circulation portals we're proposing are sized to preserve that hierarchy that we think is appropriate. That hierarchy was visible to in Byard-Binder Bell's master plan. You can see, for example, in this image, a little bit further north, the way that their, the circulation portals are always larger, more, again, more intuitive. They kind of lead you in and the storefronts tend to be smaller. They're punched openings within the stone surfaces. So we're back in the Forty Second Street passage, looking south. This is the condition, the current condition. And then our proposed condition with taller circulation portals that will kind of intuitively lead passengers into the transit hall. All of the new floor surfaces, all the new wall surfaces. All of the new floor surfaces, all the new wall surfaces within lot one will be consistent with the surrounding materials within the passage. So they'll be, they'll be continuous. Here we're near the entrance, looking north towards the terminal. And you can see after our proposed condition, you'll be able to see the transit hall beyond. And you'll clearly be able to see the boundary between the landmarked interior and the transit hall inside lot thirty. Here we're looking south towards Forty Second Street entrance. And I want to note here, the easternmost vestibule, the easternmost doorway. That's the elevator that I mentioned earlier that has been blocked for, for many decades now. And the proposed removal and of this elevator into our transit hall and the restoration of this door to its original condition and its original capacity. Again, helping to congest the entrance into this Forty Second Street Passage. So we're hoping that these changes are appropriate and that they reinforce the Bozart's actuality of the terminal. And the beloved spaces that came out of the buyer binder bell master plan as well. I know that we went over this very quickly, but I do thank you for your time and, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, and thank you very much for a well laid out and articulated presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? Right. I'm not seeing any questions at this time. So why don't we move to public testimony and we, yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Sorry, just remembered one. What is the zoning section that is being asked for review in this case?
This is a, can you hear me?
Yeah.
David Kornowski from Free Frank, glad you's counsel. Eighty one, six forty two of the zoning resolution provides that when you have a lot that is contiguous to Grand Central that is being developed with landmark floor area that the city planning commission must receive a report from landmarks concerning the harmonious relationship.
Eighty one dash six forty two?
Yes. Now, when you read that, you will see that it has to do with a certain kind of transfer. And the transfer that we are making is technically different, but the resolution as part of this project will be amended to make clear that in connection with this particular form of transfer, the same requirement will apply.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Lutti, please go ahead. Commissioner Lutti, did you have a question?
Sorry, she's muted.
I'm, I'm muting myself. So I, I, I'm just interested in, I mean, it seems that it's going to be incredibly helpful to open up what sometimes seems some areas especially that seem a little claustrophobic as you're walking through. What, what, you know, with the zoning changes and with the building that's going to be happening? What is the anticipated flow of people that will be moving through here versus what it is now? What was the number? Can you give us an estimate?
In terms of the overall, you know, employees and so on that will be in the building, is that the question?
Yeah.
And pedestrian flows?
Not only in the building, but in general, just, I mean, I, I'm assuming as part of the work that you're doing, you've just been anticipating not only because of the building, but because of the other developments in the area and the other buildings in the area, that there's going to be an increase in traffic, for traffic. And can you, do you know that? Or can you share that? On a daily basis, what it might be? During a work.
So that's yeah. So, so that's certainly something that'll be studied under the environmental review that we're undertaking as part of the U R P. I mean, the building population itself. You know, there'll obviously be an influx of new workers. What we've done with the MTA, and this may help with your question, is with the improvements of the Forty Second, along the Forty Second Street Passage that Rami went through. And a series of other trans improvements that we didn't get into in this discussion. We've actually elevated the level of service throughout the system from fairly subpar levels to, to much better levels with the MTA. So while there'll be an additional influx of, of people, there'll also be corresponding improvements throughout the circulation network to address.
Right.
Does that help answer your question there?
Well, no, I'm assuming that. I was just wondering if you had any numbers.
Yeah. So we don't have the overall numbers yet. We're studying that as part of the environmental review.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
Yes, can I, can I ask?
Whoops. You're muted, Commissioner Jefferson.
Okay, can I ask an architectural question? And it has to do with the plant. The plant is just a wonderful urban amenity. I have a question about the circulation of it. Can you go to the diagram that shows the elevation? So I really have two questions and they might be.
We have a lot of flies.
Does this help?
Yeah, yeah. If you, you see the stairs, the, the circulation of these stairs, the, the architectural reasons for placing them in the public realm instead of putting them north and south. What was the idea behind that? Because there's so many people walking up Forty Second Street and they stare. So I thought I was asking what, what generated the location of the stair at this particular place?
Rami, do you want to take that and talk about the transit infrastructure and circulation?
Maybe I can take that on. And, and maybe one thing that I quickly want to, want to try to, try to show here is that these stairs, of course, sit within our site, right? They sit within our property line. They don't infringe on the current width of the sidewalk. And then on top of that, we're also increasing the sidewalk widths by an effective five feet underneath this plant. And so we're working very hard to really decongest the sidewalk there. Moreover, I just want to show you quickly in the axonometric, at the point where these two stairs actually meet the ground. So again, all of this is happening within our property line. Our property line is out here.
Okay.
And so the stairs are within the property line and we're expanding the sidewalk by up to seventeen feet here at the base in order to make sure that there, we're not adding to the congestion, but that we're actually helping with the congestion.
Thank you. And then the second question is that if you, if you go back to that perspective that you showed before. Yes, this one, where this one, where, you know, the, the structure coming down, it's like a curtain coming down. My question was, and you can see through it, my question was, the ceiling of the lobby. How does it relate to the total structure of the landmark? In other words, if I'm inside of some, if you would I truly see a portion of the landmark or would I be able to see more? Should it be higher? What, what defines the height of that interior ceiling?
There are, Jeff, should I take this one?
Yep.
So there's structural considerations right now that are determining what the height of this lobby is. And, you know, we're also not trying to, you know, design the tallest tower in this, in the city. That's not the, the expressed aim of this. So we're trying to be conservative and not create a space that is so tall that it starts to compete with the proportion of the terminal itself. I don't know if that, if that kind of makes sense.
Well, I, I think it's a, you know, it's a beautiful, you know, the beautiful lobby. So I was just questioning whether, I was just questioning whether it, you know, how the ceiling was decided upon. But I, I think it works. And I think if, if, if I saw more and I walked in from outside and I could see through the building and see more of Grand Central, it would be quite beautiful. Just a question.
From the interior of the building, I understand.
Yeah, from the exterior. As I'm walking through, I look through the glass corridor and I see the Grand Central from exterior. That perspective that we were shown, go back to that perspective. Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. That's, the other one, this, there's another one. That one, so across the screen, I can see straight to diagonally to the building, right? Through the glass entrance, the second glass and an actual view all the way through. Could be very dramatic, just, just an idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. We may have more questions after the testimony, but why don't we move on to the testimony portion right of our hearing right now? And if you are in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And as always, we will start with anyone who signed up in advance first and then get to everyone else. And I'll turn it over to our executive director, Lisa Chris Savage, to walk us through the testimony. Lisa?
Hey, great. Thank you. And perhaps we could move to the testimony slide as well. And I just wanted to alert everybody who plans to speak again, Sarah, so to raise your hands. We're going to be calling people that signed up in advance. I will call those people first, then followed by anybody else who has their hand up. And please, when I bring you into the room, you'll get a request to unmute yourself. And then you can also turn on your camera if you choose, and then please state your name for the record. And again, you just, you have three minutes. So I'm going to start with Rob Burns from East Midtown Partnership. Followed by Matthew Clark.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Burns. I'm president of the East Midtown Partnership, which is a Manhattan Business Improvement District. Today I'd like to support the proposed project Commodore Plan for one seventy five Park Avenue next to the Grand Central Terminal. Terminal City in the Grand Central Terminal area were originally designed as catalyst for density. And the area includes some of the most notable skyscrapers of the twentieth and twenty first centuries. With the corner of East Forty Second Street and Lexington Avenue, once hailed as the world's greatest skyscraper corner. The Grand Hyatt site at that corner has been a missed opportunity. By contrast, the fluid contemporary design of one seventy five park is in keeping with the historic nature of Terminal City. In addition, by pulling away from the South and West property lines and creating a large glazed lobby, the design of one seventy five park will reveal the ornate eastern facade of Grand Central Terminal with new views, creating harmony between the proposed design and the landmark. And the creation of a network of public plazas, starting up at the viaduct level will allow the public to appreciate the terminal up close as well as adding needed public space. Finally, the recent East Midtown rezoning plan was meticulously formulated to realize the original vision of Terminal City. While delivering on critical policy goals like spurring investment in transit infrastructure, enhancing the public realm and modernizing the neighborhood's aging office stock. One seventy five park delivers on the promise of these midtown rezoning on all fronts by creating the type of density the Grand Central Terminal was, was designed to encourage. Opposing the building because it is tall and modern goes against the goals of East Midtown rezoning. This project will deliver on that long, on those long-term goals and in the interim will provide many well-paying construction jobs. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this exciting project.
Okay, thank you. So next we have Matthew Clark. Okay, Matthew, I've promoted you as a panelist. You'll be followed by Maria Free and then followed by Tara Kelly.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Matthew Clark. I am the executive director of the Design Trust for Public Space. Our organization is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the future of public space in New York City. I'm speaking today in favor of one seventy five Park Avenue. And in particular, to his proposed relationship to Grand Central Station and on proposed changes to the Forty Second Street Passage. Grand Central Station is one of New York City's most important public spaces. An entrepôt of movement to and from the city and a proud symbol of our indefatigable spirit. The rezoning of East Midtown has created opportunities to reimagine this neighborhood. The project under review today will positively contribute to the neighborhood by improving contextual understanding of Grand Central, by vastly improving the transit experience for New Yorkers and by adding new public space for the community. In terms of the harmonious relationship to Grand Central, the proposed design accomplishes several important goals. First, it reveals a three-dimensional and volumetric majesty of Grand Central by improving view corridors of the station's east facade, as can now be experienced on the western side. The proposed Grand Central Terrace will not only promote a new appreciation of Grand Central above plant level, but it also provides an impetus to reimagine the Park Avenue viaduct potentially as a pedestrian space in the coming years and decades. As a trained designer, I'm appreciative of the team's choice of materials and detailing. It is responsive to the intent of the station, yet applied in ways that are contemporary and forward-facing. Additionally, while our organization focuses on public space, we take the widest possible definition of that term. In New York City, there is perhaps no more important, interesting and vibrant public space than our subway and mass transit systems. As we all know, our region needs significant investment, investment to ensure these spaces can serve our city for generations. I'm incredibly supportive and enthusiastic of the changes proposed to the passage and to the larger transit experience in Grand Central and the Forty Second Street subway complex. The proposed changes will transform the rider experience and will also improve the understanding and unity of Grand Central Station. And it's for these reasons I'm testifying today in support of the project application. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have Maria Free. And Maria, I've brought you in. Do you follow by Tara Kelly? And then Fatima Afia.
Hi, my name is Maria Free.
Hi.
And on behalf of the New York Building Congress, we are proud to support the development of one seventy five Park Ave. This project is a milestone in the continued evolution of one of New York's most iconic neighborhoods. It delivers on the promise of the East Midtown rezoning and responds appropriately to Grand Central Terminal. The Building Congress has for a hundred years advocated for investment, infrastructure, pursued job creation and promoted preservation and growth in the New York City area. We represent over 550 organizations comprised of more than a quarter million professionals. The Building Congress believes that one seventy five Park Ave is the right type of investment for New York. The design responds to Grand Central's role as a catalyst for density, which was first demonstrated in the historic vision for Terminal City and more recently through the East Midtown rezoning. Much like one Vanderbilt, which the Building Congress also supported, one seventy five Park Ave will replace an outdated structure with a new sustainable tower that promotes significant private investment in public infrastructure. This type of density delivers large-scale improvements to the streetscape and transportation network. It is harmonious with both the spirit and architecture of Grand Central. One seventy five Park Ave signifies engineering excellence and enhances the public realm. It's an engineering feat that will improve sightlines and the flow of foot traffic in Grand Central, the subway and on the street. Moreover, the project will add significantly more open public space than what is required under the rezoning. The network of public plazas will open Grand Central's eastern facade to the public. And people will finally be able to appreciate Grand Central up close. The project will also provide new vantage points to the Chrysler Building and other Midtown icons. In closing, one seventy five Park Ave echoes the ethos of Grand Central and the neighborhood. It respectfully increases density by transforming an underused site into a state-of-the-art building and enhances public realm with transit improvements and new open space. The Building Congress proudly supports this project and we urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Tara Kelly. Followed by Fatima Afia and then Kelly Carroll.
Hello. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Tara Kelly, speaking on behalf of Municipal Arts Society. The dictionary definition of harmonious is forming a pleasing or consistent whole or free from disagreement or dissent. Neither of these descriptions apply to the relationship between the proposal for 175 Park Avenue and Grand Central Terminal. The project team states that their intention was that 175 Park Avenue make referential gestures to Grand Central in recalling its Beaux-Arts symmetry, relating the express beams to the fluted columns, connecting the above-grade open space to Pershing Square Viaduct, and stepping back at the street line to open up views of the previously obscured eastern facade of the terminal. However, none of these efforts result in a successful dialogue with the neighboring landmark. First, the amalgamation of columns on the four corners of the base are a busy distraction from the visual impact of the terminal. The configuration of the columns results from the engineering challenge of improving the maze of subway platforms beneath, an outcome that is extremely desirable. However, the column flutes are superhuman in scale, and their termination at the deck of the plinth is abrupt. Secondly, the facade of the base is grossly out of scale and not convincingly referential to Grand Central. The pedestrian experience, especially coming from the east, will be visually overwhelmed by 175 Park, its entrance and staircase. Though the improved circulation to Pershing Square Viaduct is a welcome addition, it does nothing to enhance the visual experience approaching Grand Central and may, in fact, obscure the entrance to the landmark. It is not just the base that has a negative impact. The overwhelming density and dispiriting design of the rest of the tower should not go unmentioned. The building's footprint alone competes with the scale of Grand Central at the base and then overpowers it with the immense height and bulk of the tower above. It is worth noting that the enormous density results from a series of bonuses as well as zoning lot merger that were never anticipated to be taken in total in the East Midtown rezoning process. While the finding of harmoniousness is narrowly focused on the relationship to Grand Central, it cannot be ignored that this new building will overwhelm one of the nicest ensembles of 20th-century skyscraper architecture in New York City. The tower's windswept setbacks have no reference point to the Chrysler Building across the street or anything else in the Midtown skyline. 175 Park is a series of extruded boxes more appropriate for Dallas or Dubai. Finally, the squat stump of a crown stands in stark contrast to the Chrysler's exuberant and elegant spire. In the end, Project Commodore, as proposed, is an interruption to the experience of Grand Central Terminal and the historic buildings that surround it at both the sidewalk and the skyline. Although there is no clear criteria for a finding of harmoniousness, the commission need only refer to its own discussion of One Vanderbilt. In 2015, it was stated that along 42nd Street, harmoniousness constitutes a visual relationship wherein a new building will not detract from the impact of Grand Central. With this in mind, it seems impossible for the commission to find that 175 Park Avenue meets the standard of harmoniousness. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next we have Fatima Afia. He'll be followed by Kelly Carroll and then followed by Ryan Kukos. Okay, Fatima, you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
Hi, can you hear and see me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my name is Fatima Afia. I'm an attorney at Hiller PC, and I'll be reading a statement on behalf of Michael Hiller of Hiller PC. "We represent Christabel Goff in opposition to the application. I trust that the commissioners are aware that Landmarks Law was enacted in response to the demolition of the Old Penn Station, one of New York's most iconic architectural achievements and culturally significant places. Some 55 years later, New Yorkers still talk about the loss of the Old Penn Station and the importance of City Council's response. I promise you all that in the generations to come, New Yorkers will be talking about what the commission does today with respect to this application. I won't lecture you about the Grand Central Terminal or its architectural and historic significance. I will state simply that it is among the most recognized and important landmarks in New York, if not in the country. The application proposes to construct what would become one of the largest, if not the largest, buildings in New York City directly adjacent to the Grand Central Terminal. To comment that the proposed building would overshadow, obscure, and ultimately render irrelevant the Grand Central Terminal would be a classic understatement. Simply put, if this proposed building were to be erected, Grand Central Terminal may as well be de-designated as an historic landmark. No one is going to see, much less look, for Grand Central Terminal when it stands in the shadow of a hulking 1600-foot-tall adjacent building. The relationship between the proposed mega tower and the low-lying Grand Central Terminal would not be harmonious. It would constitute an affront to Grand Central Terminal, the city, and the Landmarks Law itself. Aside from the aesthetic and landmark preservation considerations before you, I will add one more matter to consider: the procedural error of evaluating the application under the auspices of the Report and Recommendation Provisions of Section 25-318. I heard staff and council suggest that the commission does not have jurisdiction over this application because the property in question is not designated, nor is it located in a historic district. However, the presentation materials more than suggest that the work would require alteration of the eastern facade of the Grand Central Terminal, including its viaduct, both of which are designated landmark improvements. The MTA, while a public benefit corporation, is not city-owned or even state-owned. Section 25-318 of the Landmarks Law, by its plain terms, pertains only to city-owned properties and scenic landmarks. This application should therefore be evaluated based upon the criteria set forth in Section 25-307, specifically as a certificate of appropriateness. Certificates of appropriateness are binding, not advisory. Thus, the procedural error of evaluating this application in the context of 25-318 report and recommendation, as opposed to a certificate of appropriateness under 25-307, is significant. We recognize that Mr. Silverman disagrees with us on this point, but we respectfully ask him to reconsider his views on this issue and the commission to delay issuance of a report and recommendation until this legal issue is finalized. I'm sure I can speak for everyone when I say that it would be a monumental failure of the Landmarks Law if this application were to be viewed by posterity, similarly to the way we now view the demolition of the Old Penn Station. We urge the commission to defer its consideration until the procedural and legal issues can be fully addressed." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Kelly Carroll. Followed by Ryan Kukos and then followed by Judith Dupre.
The Historic Districts Council thanks the applicant team for their presentation tailored to our organization. It is evident that substantial thought, creativity, and consideration for both the proposed new building and Grand Central Terminal has gone into every aspect of this proposal. We have no objections to the modification of the 42nd Street Passage and viaduct sidewalk, both of which are appropriate interventions and improvements. The public amenities of the proposed development will facilitate a harmonious relationship with Grand Central Terminal from an experiential standpoint. The stairs which lead pedestrians up to the Park Avenue viaduct are a nod to the inviting circulation inside the terminal itself. This proposed public space above grade will allow people to have a moment with Grand Central's east facade as a backdrop for the first time. Currently, there is nowhere to ponder and enjoy any facade of Grand Central Terminal for any amount of time without being in the way of pedestrian or vehicular traffic flow, so this amenity is most welcome. Regarding the relationship between the two buildings, HDC does not feel that the proposed building is as human-friendly as the terminal or the other landmarks in the immediate vicinity. We believe this is because the building appears to ascend from the ground instead of from a base or a plinth hierarchy, which is characteristic of all neighboring buildings. HDC understands that this is a challenging site to develop because of our city's major arteries directly beneath it. The engineering solution is truly remarkable, but we struggle to translate this engineering expression into how it will feel as architecture on 42nd Street and the experience of its proximity to pedestrians. This building's robust engineering system deserves to be viewed in the round, but this location cannot provide a plaza for it. In conclusion, HDC feels that another look at the hierarchy, massing, and pedestrian-scaled experiences of other ground floors in this area should be further studied in order to make this building more at home in Terminal City. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Kelly, you were cut off just at the beginning. Could you say your name for the record? Okay. Well, that was Kelly Carroll from Historic Districts Council. Um, okay, so Ryan Kukos. I'm bringing you into the meeting, followed by Judith Dupre and Danny Pearlstein.
My name is Brian Pukos, and I am a Senior Project Manager with the Grand Central Partnership. The Grand Central Partnership is the business improvement district serving an approximately 70-square-block area in Midtown East surrounding Grand Central Terminal. On behalf of our District Management Association and its Board of Directors, we welcome the opportunity to comment on 175 Park Avenue. As one of the world's largest bids serving a district with 73 million square feet of commercial, residential, and retail building space, our goal is to keep our Midtown East neighborhood clean, safe, and thriving. Doing so involves supporting projects like 175 Park Avenue, which we believe creates harmony with Grand Central Terminal and the surrounding neighborhood in several ways. First, 175 Park Avenue fulfills Grand Central Terminal's role as a catalyst for density. Grand Central Terminal and Terminal City help pave the way for the development of some of the most notable skyscrapers of 20th-century America. 175 Park Avenue's design, from its brilliant engineering to its fluid contemporary form, is harmonious with the historical trajectory of Terminal City into the 21st century. Second, 175 Park Avenue creates harmony through visibility and access to the terminal's eastern facade. The terminal has long suffered from a lack of visibility from the east. By pulling away from the property line on the South and West and by creating a large glazed lobby, 175 Park Avenue will reveal the terminal to pedestrians approaching from 42nd Street and Lexington Avenue. Additionally, the creation of a network of public plazas starting at the viaduct level will allow the public to appreciate the terminal's eastern facade up close. By creating these new ways to appreciate the terminal, the design of 175 Park Avenue valorizes the landmark and creates harmony. Finally, 175 Park Avenue delivers on the promise of East Midtown rezoning by harmoniously respecting the historic character of the neighborhood while solidifying the area's position among the premier central business districts in the world through investment in transit infrastructure, strengthening the public realm, and modernizing aging office stock. For these reasons, we urge the commission to find that there is a harmonious relationship between the proposed design of 175 Park Avenue and Grand Central Terminal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to everybody that's an attendee, I'm not sure what happened, but all of the hands were lowered. So if you could, once again, raise your hand if you haven't spoken and would like to speak, that would be really helpful. Okay, next we have Judith Dupre. Followed by Danny Pearlstein. And Judith, I've brought you in, you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Judith Dupre. I'm an historian and infrastructure consultant. My books on architecture and engineering include skyscrapers, published in a dozen languages, and the first history of the New World Trade Center, a project that also demanded intelligent transit solutions and improvements. I'm speaking in support of 175 Park. One response when a building adjacent to an historical structure is to design a facade that reflects and defers to the older structure. It's a good solution used successfully in cities around the globe. 175 Park, however, pays homage to Grand Central Terminal in ways that are entirely new, harmonious, and wholly authentic. Grand Central's meaning arises from one essential noble function: to move nearly a million people in and out of the city every day. Outside Grand Central at the moment, the streets are far too congested for anyone and admire the building. You really can't get a good look at it until you're inside with your ticket and a few extra minutes and can see its extraordinary ceiling and architectural detailing. 175 Park offers a solution and an opportunity. It responds to many critical issues above and below ground with great civic generosity. 175 Park has been brilliantly engineered. Its structure meets 42nd Street at only two points, allowing the base of the building to be opened up, creating multiple public areas. It is wrapped on four sides with public terraces that will allow people to finally see and appreciate Grand Central Terminal. And I have to add here, given some of the comments, that in London, at SOM's Bishopsgate project, and this is a complex of buildings where steel supports also intersect with the public plaza, that there is a powerful visceral thrill, trust me, to be in the presence of a skyscraper's actual structure. Back in New York, the building's aesthetic and materiality complement and contrast its neighbors. Its structural steel columns rise like a blossoming flower writ large, revealing Grand Central's exterior ornamental sculpture, as well as the organic Art Deco lines of the Chenin, Chrysler, and Greybar buildings. The bundled steel columns also make a vertical visual reference to the train lines that run beneath it, the metaphoric lifeblood of Grand Central. Grand Central's elegance and excellence calls for a bold and helpful neighbor like 175 Park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Danny Pearlstein. Followed by Franz Loz Bolak, John Graham, and then Mark Bench. Okay, Danny, I've brought you in. You just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Thanks so much for having me. My name is Danny Pearlstein. I'm the Policy and Communications Director at the Riders Alliance. We are New York's grassroots organization of subway and bus riders. Like with One Vanderbilt, which we also supported, this application represents a really tremendous transit improvement for New York riders. I can think of three, you know, primary facets of that. Obviously, the opening up of the mezzanine, which, you know, everyone knows now is a rabbit warren and impossible to see through or easily to get around despite the tremendous numbers of riders who need it every day. And then, of course, the stairwell up from there to the Vanderbilt Hall level, to the street level, which has dramatically opened up with this design so that there, you know, there isn't just that one little tiny, you know, diagonal staircase and escalator, but but really, you know, the opportunity for the throughput that that people need here. And I think what what all of that adds up to really is much, much better access from the subway, you know, which has, you know, in many respects, like an afterthought in Grand Central, but really now tying the two inextricably together, providing excellent access to the terminal from public transit, you know, for everybody on the 4567 and shuttle, that this, you know, really transforms that experience, you know, at least as much as the One Vanderbilt side does on the other direction. So we are very enthusiastic about the transit benefits of this project, and thanks so much for taking the time.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Franz Loz Bolak. I don't see your... Okay, Franz Loz, I've brought you in.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name for the record.
Well, my name is Franz Loz Bolak, and I'm testifying today on behalf of the City Club of New York as the Chair of its Preservation Committee. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We do not want to spend much time parsing what makes this building so inharmonious with Grand Central Terminal. It is too painfully obvious that this oversized and overexpressive tower with pantaloons is not harmonious. It is too big, too muscular, and frankly, it could be anywhere, across town, in Houston, in Dubai, wherever. The Hotel Commodore and other buildings designed as a part of the Terminal City development complemented Grand Central for many years. complemented Grand Central for many years by forming a consistent frame for it. These buildings were related to each other by their height, materiality, and relationship to the street. This is a disaster that has been a long time in the making, starting with the unsympathetic skinning of the undesignated original Terminal City building on this site. A new harmonious facade would be welcome for this historic steel structure that does not seem to have any difficulty reaching terminal firma. It doesn't. But the current design is merely an outgrowth of the structural limitations imposed on a new building by the underground activities of the terminal and the surrounding Terminal City. The Terminal City Development and the associated transportation elements are still a functioning, significant urban and architectural achievement. The Commission has the responsibility to designate the unprotected buildings that remain from the original Terminal City, in particular, the Roosevelt Hotel and the Poston Building. The Roosevelt Hotel and the Poston Building remain as examples of how to be a good architectural neighbor. We urge the Commission to reject this proposal as obviously inharmonious with Grand Central Terminal and to immediately designate the vulnerable undesignated buildings that were part of Terminal City, in particular, the Roosevelt Hotel and the Poston Building. Otherwise, very soon, we will need again to review similar proposals for those sites. Thank you for the...
Good afternoon Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. The Victorian Society does not in any way find the relationship between Grand Central Terminal and the proposed new building to be harmonious, and we hope to persuade the Commission to share our view. If we at the Victorian Society were cynical, we could imagine that the real estate community, abetted by some city officials, were exacting payback against Grand Central Terminal for its starring role in the most important preservation law case in U.S. history, resulting in the finding that landmarks' preservation laws are constitutional. Our cynical selves might say this proposal allows us to visualize their payback with the new building's parasitic attachment to the terminal's viaduct, sucking the seemingly endless supply of development rights out and up to its towering crown. Though we are not cynics, so we will dutifully address the minimal role given to LPC in assessing the proposed transfer of development rights. The heavy lifting required by the zoning resolution has already been done by previous projects. The terminal is in good physical condition, there is a continuing maintenance plan, and presumably the plan is being followed. That leaves harmonious relationship, and apparently neither the Landmarks Commission or anyone else has to find one in order for this project to move forward. The Commission need only issue a report concerning the harmonious relationship, a bit of linguistic legerdemain from our City Planning Commission that renders a once reasonable concept nearly meaningless. It is our view that the architectural relationship between Grand Central Terminal and the proposed new building is not harmonious. The proposal meets not a single criterion for being an architecturally good neighbor. First and foremost is height completing the transformation of the terminal from the low-scaled centerpiece and focus of a dense mid-rise masonry commercial district to an out-of-context remnant crowded and crushed on every side by enormous glass towers. The conceit of rendering bits of the landmark visible by cutting away portions of the new building further minimizes the terminal's presence to something akin to a vault in a museum case, rather than a cohesive part of the city's architectural fabric. The new building speaks a whole different architectural language than the terminal. Using none of the grammar, syntax, and vocabulary, it allows buildings of different scales and styles to be comfortable with each other, notwithstanding the diagrammatic representations of the proposal's human scale. Its features are extremely assertive, overpowering, and disorientingly curved, bowed, and angled, especially at the base, where it is experienced adjacent to the terminal. We urge the Commission to use its unfortunately limited jurisdiction to make the most forceful case possible that the new building's relationship with Grand Central Terminal is not only not harmonious, but will do serious urbanistic damage to this landmark. We will continue our testimony with a second speaker. Thank you Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Mark Bench, followed by Claire Weiss, Tri-State Transportation, and then Eleonora Bershatskaya.
Thank you Lisa. Good afternoon. This is Mark Bench for on behalf of the Victorian Society. The second application is for a report concerning alterations to the designated viaduct sidewalk and 42nd Street passage. We find the proposed work in the much-altered passage to be appropriate because of the hierarchy informed the proposed openings, use of matching and harmonizing materials, and reopening of the third historic doors to 42nd Street. Outside, we wonder why the work within the development easement area within Lot 1 shouldn't require an application for a certificate of appropriateness rather than a report. If it were possible to separate the proposal for the expanded viaduct sidewalk from the new building behind it, it would say the simple paving materials and bollards aren't out of character within the small forecourt to the hotel entrance that apparently has existed there since the Commodore Hotel opened. Taking a broader look at the totality of this enlarged pedestrian space, including the part not on the landmark site but which may be relevant to considerations of a harmonious relationship, the simple paving, seating, and low planters won't detract from the visible portions of the viaduct, and the terminal will allow this perspective to be more broadly enjoyed by the public. However, we question the appropriateness of trees in this location. But for all the open spaces additions around the tower, the work at the 42nd Street Passage and the adjacent and related new transit hall, we are not sure the applicant deserves credit for solving congestion problems that seem largely of its own making. There are other public realms, there are other public realm problems not of the applicant's making, however, that we believe should be addressed. One is the lack of a bike route on the viaduct. But more importantly, we have major concerns about the original ornamental lamp posts which were temporarily removed from the viaduct 30 years ago and racking sleep have survived in storage. It is a latter point that we remainder of our testimony will be directed. We have provided relevant photographs for our written testimony. Sides 54 and 68 note that historic metal railing on the east side of the viaduct and the stone parapet around the rest of the viaduct will remain untouched by the project. Both the railing and parapets provided the prints for the extraordinary bronze and cast iron lampposts that historically encircled the terminal until they were removed in a failed Department of Transportation project 30 or more years ago. Instead of being returned to the viaduct, the lamp posts were disassembled and stored in the warehouse, where they were catalogued by a former LPC Executive Director and a member of the staff. Those files might still be in the Commission's office. Two of the lamp posts were restored by Metro North and installed at the northern end of the Park Avenue viaduct a few years ago for the centennial of the terminal. The rest, 18 or so, have been awaiting the right combination of priority and funding. We don't necessarily suggest that the fate of these lamp posts should be wholly determined by the future of the proposed new building. However, the Victorian Society hopes that the interest and advocacy of the Landmarks Commission will ensure that the time is right for priority and funding to finally come to restore this long-missing original feature to the viaduct, the terminal, and the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Claire Weiss, followed by Tri-State Transportation, and then followed by Eleonora Bershatskaya.
Thank you. Chair Carroll and Commissioners, my name is Claire Weiss. I'm an architect and urban designer. And submitting testimony here today on, really, behalf of myself. On its merits, the Grand Hyatt redevelopment application, I think, is carefully considered. For the first time bringing together this multi-level, really complex, public transit by reconciling much-needed public space improvements. The proposed design reveals an architectural strategy that, like Grand Central Terminal itself, literally grows out of its transit infrastructure. The public rooms, halls, steps, and elevators at multiple levels and scales will finally fully connect the train halls with the subway lines. It is for this reason that the design is at once a visionary work for New York City of architecture and one that makes sense with harmonizing with the central position of Grand Central. By making the building narrow at the base, the SOM design carefully negotiates a subway station and the Metro North tax below. I think creating a new kind of indoor-outdoor space. At the same time, this project creates an altogether new kind of connected public realm, both at the viaduct level, which has not really happened before, the street level, and the concourse or train hall level. And that's really what Grand Central has always needed. Whereas the current Hyatt intrudes all over the transit infrastructure, contributes absolutely nothing to either the transit network or the sidewalk, crowds Grand Central, and obscures its eastern facade, this proposal opens up a new public space between itself and Grand Central. It makes a special public space to appreciate the view, and I believe will increase the visibility of Grand Central, the terminal itself. It will open up the eastern facade of Grand Central and create in turn a western facade in response to it, rather than relegating this whole area as a lotline or sideyard condition. The space will be the start of new uses for the viaduct in the future, when, I hope, cars are guests and the viaduct is not just simply a single-use public space for cars. This response acknowledges the important potential of the terminal's three-dimensionality, I believe. The curving forms, I think they are a contemporary statement that is rooted in the building's structural expression. This has been carefully shown in the presentation, and it reflects its connections in a low-grade foundation. I think it pragmatically plays with a biomorphic symmetry, and in this way, it does have the excitement of a building built in the century, yet plays off the classical and ornamented solidity of Grand Central Terminal and its focus on 42nd Street. The importance of the Grand Hyatt proposal, what the importance that it makes of their central and public entrance on 42nd Street really echoes that frontality and that symmetry. New views of the terminal will be open for all different vantage points along 42nd. Some of these views are through transparent column-free openings that result from collecting the building's structure and bringing its columns to just two points on 42nd. This creates a thrilling dialogue between the different centuries that will have produced each of the buildings. I think this dialogue is fundamentally harmonious. And finally, the transparency of the base of the building reveals not only glimpses of the terminal but views of a new stone structure, an unornamented one, which is the core of the new commercial tower and hotel, connecting to the stone of Grand Central but as an interior space without the decorative elements of Grand Central, making a harmonious, not jarring, experience when going through both spaces, which commuters and workers alike will do often. This is another layer of harmony and dialogue with the terminal. The effort to understand and enhance the context of Grand Central with both new public space and an important addition to New York skyline, in alignment, scale, materiality, and rhythm of both solid and void, is something to look forward to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Tri-State Transportation, followed by Eleonora Bershatskaya, and then followed by Dan Beederman. And just to remind everybody, I'm still working off of the list of people that signed up in advance.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Felicia Park Rogers. I'm the Director of Regional Infrastructure Projects for Tri-State Transportation Campaign, an organization that fights for safe, fast, and fair transportation options that reduce car dependence in New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut. I'm here today as a transit advocate to express our support for 175 Park Avenue to redevelop the Grand Hyatt New York site adjacent to Grand Central Terminal in Midtown East. It is hard to find a more transit-rich development spot in the five boroughs of New York City. Our support primarily stems from the enhanced subway and commuter rail station circulation, as well as the significant accessibility improvements beneath the proposed development. We are also quite pleased with the public green terrace surrounding the tower. Our review of the project leads us to conclude that it is designed in such a way to honor the historic place of Grand Central in our city's transit and architectural history, as well as responding to the needs of the modern transit user. Before the pandemic, overcrowding of Midtown Transit hubs was a major issue, and it is expected to continue to be a problem when restrictions are lifted and workers return. This project and the proposed transit hall improve both wayfinding and circulation space, both greatly needed under the current configuration. It expands the passenger capacity of both Grand Central Terminal and the connecting 42nd Street subway station, while also providing vital connectivity to the soon-to-be-completed eastside access terminal tracks. As Manhattan reopens for business this year, it will be crucial that we move ahead with this project and projects like it to provide a better, more efficient, and safer commuting experience. This investment in transportation infrastructure and public space will not only encourage the use of public transit at one of the city's largest hubs, it will demonstrate that urban development projects can be successful by acting like urban development projects. That is, recognizing the availability of public transit, developing densely to take advantage of existing infrastructure, and contributing to the community by developing public amenities and public space. More broadly, New York City Council should encourage dense development near transit hubs like this one. The Department of City Planning project projects that New York City's population will grow to 9.1 million by the year 2030. With our city's population on the rise, we need to encourage people to live and work near transit in order to improve road congestion. That means building densely near transit hubs like this one. We all know our public transit system is in crisis. Last year, transit ridership plummeted as COVID-19 shutdown orders kept much of the population at home, and ridership levels are expected to take at least a few years to fully recover. If we fail to transform our transit system to appropriately handle future demand, we will fail to bring back riders, and we will add to the congestion that is choking our streets. According to the Partnership for New York City, this costs our region approximately $20 billion a year in lost revenue. In a time where we need to encourage people to use mass transit and cards, we should be bold about developing densely but thoughtfully around transit hubs. This proposed project is a good example of both. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Eleonora, I just brought you into the room, followed by Dan Beederman, and then followed by Ronald Kopniky.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. My name is Eleonora Bershatskaya, and I'm reading testimony prepared by Ken Smith from Ken Smith Workshop. Dear Commissioners, I'm writing in support of the proposed public spaces and urbanism of the 175 Park Avenue project. From an urbanistic position, the proposed building at 175 Park Avenue shows a carefully thought-out and sensitive relationship to the Grand Central Terminal, which for too long has had its eastern facade hidden from the public by an adjoining building. By pulling the new building away from the eastern facade of the Grand Central Terminal, 175 Park Avenue makes it possible to experience the terminal as a freestanding, bizarre object building. From my perspective, the gift of creating publicly accessible open spaces at the level of the Grand Central Viaduct and wrapping all four sides of the proposed new structure with an elevated landscape terrace promises to be a game changer in providing much-needed green space along the Madison Avenue corridor and its intersection with 42nd Street. The architectural gesture of reinforcing the datum of the viaduct at the base of the new building is effective in extending the base of the Grand Central Terminal all the way from Vanderbilt to the corner of Lexington and around the corner to the Graybar Building. The elevated position of these proposed open spaces with landscape, seating, and respite will provide vantage points for viewing and experiencing the area's cityscape in a new way. Although not part of this project per se, the proposed design also opens up the possibility to dream of a future when the entire viaduct might become a car-free, public-open space, knitting together this part of the city into a broader public realm experience. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion, Ken Smith.
Okay, thank you very much. And next we have Dan Beederman, followed by Ronald Kopniky, and then followed by Jared Dworkin. And Dan Beederman, I've brought you in, you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Thank you. Somewhat different from the normal Zoom. I'm the Executive Director of the Bryant Park Corporation. I asked Skidmore to show me the plan because my initial concern was the bulk and shadows on the park. One Vandy has some of that, although we like the building very much. And in the course of reviewing the presentation, I was impressed in five or six major ways, some of which don't have to do with the harmony. some of which don't have to do with the harmonious finding that the Commission has to make, but I think are nonetheless important. In our district at 34th Street, which I also had, Skidmore did a terrific job on Moynihan, in my view. And I think the train circulation efforts are clever and somewhat reflect the quality of Moynihan, which is really having a terrific effect after a month on the neighborhood at 34th Street that desperately needs that kind of work. Obviously, people will refer and have referred to the bulk. We believe there's no better place to put a massive amount of bulk than 50 feet from Grand Central Terminal and its trains, and are always surprised that so many bulky developments proposed right on top of train nodes are opposed by a lot of civic groups. So I think this is a good thing for the city. In the course of the discussion with Skidmore Architects about the east side being revealed, when I ran Grand Central, we had lit the other two sides of the building and were frustrated we couldn't let the east side. So this opens a terrific opportunity for someone to light that side of the facade and complete the lighting on all three sides. And last, with regard to foot traffic and the like, looks like 9,000 people may be added as a result of this building, minus whatever number of people were working or visiting the Grand Hyatt. And a lot of them, I'm sure, will enter from within as a result of the transit connection. So my experience in the neighborhood is that number, whether it's 3, 4, 5, 6,000, spread over a long period of time, is not going to make a dent in the already crowded conditions, pre-COVID, obviously, of Lexington Avenue sidewalks and the like. So for all those reasons, we think the neighborhood will be better. New York needs this kind of bulk in the right place, and we support the application.
Okay, thank you. And next Ronald Kopniky. And then the last person on the sign-in list is Jared Dwarken. Okay, Ronald Kopniky, I brought you in. You just need to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Ronald Kopniky for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Experience suggests the futility of advisory reports, but for the sake of precedent, one must object to any pretense that this proposal enjoys a harmonious relationship with the landmark. It does not. The new building, designed as a freestanding work of art, completely independent of its surroundings, ignores history and ignores the lingering importance of the former classical stone-faced terminal city that once enclosed the landmark. Terminal City still survives in the retained amassing of the old Commodore, now a Hyatt Hotel, scorning the architecture of the past in ways that Mies van der Rohe did not when he designed the Seagram Building nearby. SOM has defined a curvaceous anti-urban monolith. The problem perhaps is not so much the 83-story height as the way it's supported. The repetitive sculptural quality of the base is disorienting. Exposing the multiple structural supports and treating them as freestanding decorative features suggests little more than the difficulty of creating rentable square feet in the interstitial spaces while supporting the vast bulk above. And thanks for the generous gift of public space where you can sit in the shade next to a roaring river of traffic and breathe in the carbon monoxide exhaust. Maintaining a perpendicular west wall beside the viaduct on the former deputue place side should be a requirement, not just for public health, but to retain that historic sense of enclosure provided by what still remains of the amassing of our beautiful, lost terminal city. After the wartime bombing of Rotterdam, the city center was left with nothing but rubble and a street pattern. The peacetime destruction of New York is different, not simultaneous, but more serial, one site at a time, not for a nation struggling to win a just war, of course, but for more private purposes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Jared Dwarken. And then I'll move to everybody that has their hand raised.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jared Dwarken. I am reading written testimony prepared by Nader Turani of NADA Inc. Dear members of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, it is with pleasure that I write this brief letter of evaluation for 175 Park Avenue. By way of introduction, I currently serve as the Dean of the Erwin S. Shannon School of Architecture of the Cooper Union, while also leading my own firm, NADA Inc. Prior to my arrival in New York, I was the head of the Department of Architecture at MIT, where I taught for eight years with prior teaching appointments at both Harvard Graduate School of Design and Rhode Island School of Design. On this occasion, I have the luxury of having reviewed the schematic drawing documents of 175 Park Avenue. And while it is a significant addition to the New York skyline, I was impressed by the strategic handling of its base, where the urbanism of the street would most be impacted by any such intervention. Part of the complexity of this project seems to stem from its relationship to Grand Central Station and the two ground planes from which the building may be accessed, not only on 42nd Street, but also the raised viaduct Park Avenue that circumnavigates Grand Central Station. If this were not sufficiently complex, the connection of this site with the Great Hall of the Station, the subway lines, and the entire lower levels of infrastructure that drive the considerations of its foundation is what makes this proposal very smart. Instead of allowing the normative descent of structure onto the base of the building, where the views of Grand Central would be blocked and many of the train lines below compromised, the building's southern edge bundles all its structural columns into two pylons. With this simple, yet heroic gesture, the building's corners are allowed to elevate, revealing the main facade of Grand Central Station, which is also recessed from the street edge. If 175 Park is resolute in its symmetry, structural expression, and rational logic, it is also actually more deft in its asymmetrical handling of circulation trajectories at its base, linking it not only to the station lines, but also the viaduct on oblique desire lines. The transparency of the base also reveals an architectural logic that extends the stone treatment of Grand Central Station into the core of 175 Park. Thus, the base is treated almost as a quarry, carving out of the stone the key elements that drive all the promenades that connect the public to their very destinations. The top of this base, then, is treated with more intimate gardens, courts, and terraces, all of which play into the setback logic of the amassing of the building, stepping back at key intervals with the tower's graceful ascent. The building thus straddles a fine line between working harmoniously with Grand Central Station, while also contributing a new icon to the city in its own right. In effect, the ground is designed in deference to Grand Central Station, while the top is speaking to the scale of the city, its skyline, and its legibility from miles away. Indeed, a difficult balancing act, but done with strategic poise. I am happy to speak in more detail should my voice be necessary, but I understand the important mission of the Landmark Preservation Commission, the urban design agendas that drive our respect for the city, and the importance of recognizing our place in history in the face of architectural landmarks that precede us. Respectfully, Nader Turani. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Sharida Paulson, followed by Aubrey Bukhari. Okay, Sharida, you should just be able to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. See, Sharida, I'm sure you're here. I just sent you a request to unmute yourself. There you go.
Lisa?
Yes, we can see and hear you.
Sorry, I can't hear anything. Okay, my name is Sharida Paulson. Is that okay now?
Yes, you're good.
Thank you. It's Sharida Paulson from PKSB Architects. I only come and speak at the Commission when there's a personal aspect to this. So I am grateful to have been one of the Commissioners who voted on the buyer blunderbell plans to revitalize the terminal. And I wanted to take the opportunity to speak today because 42nd Street is a ribbon of landmarks, from Tudor City at the east to McGraw Hill at the west, our home at PKSB for the last 40 years. And there are obviously multiple buildings in between. This new tower continues the New York City tradition of looking ahead, building future landmarks, and looking for that brighter future. The new building proposed to replace the Commodore Hotel and its unfortunate glass skin takes care to reveal the terminal from the east in proposing a tower that is located centrally on its footprint and tapers its form. It also maintains the important gap of 43rd Street to allow for sunlight to come into the double walkway wall on the east side of Grand Central. The new tower is clearly delineated as a completely separate structure from Grand Central Terminal and distinguishes itself from the Grand Central jewel. The proposed tower's materials of transparent, very transparent glass and painted metal cladding reduce reflectivity and potential for uncomfortable glare. All in all, a most harmonious solution. The viaduct connection and 42nd Street passages, while many have commented on the appropriateness issue, the bottom line is these changes are entirely appropriate to this building. They are superb amenities, well-designed to complement the material palette. The viaduct level improvements expand the sidewalk, preserve the historic railing, and connect to the larger public terraces proposed around the new tower. The 42nd Street passage modifications are tremendous improvements, providing much public benefit, but they preserve historic pathways, provide much-needed space to Grand Central for visitors and transit patrons. The surgical removal of small retail spaces to accomplish these relationships is a wonderful way to activate the Grand Central Terminal and allow the public to enjoy this. I support both of these applications for reports and urge the Commission to issue favorable responses on both items. I have a small design quibble about the staircase material. It should not derail, sorry, this application in any way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sharida. Okay, next Aubrey Bukhari, followed by Emily Bach.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Bukhari, and I'll be reading written testimony prepared by Kate Asher. Chair Carol and Commissioners, my name is Kate Asher, Professor of Urban Development at Columbia Graduate School of Architecture, Planning, and Preservation, former partner at Burrow-Hapold and author of The Heights: Anatomy of a Skyscraper, The Works: Anatomy of a City, and most recently, New York Rising: A History of New York City's Development. Thank you all for allowing me to testify in support of a project that I see as both an important extension of Grand Central Terminal's historic purpose and spirit, and an answer to many of the challenges it faces as a 21st-century transit hub. Since its earliest days as Grand Central Depot, the terminal and station have functioned as a catalyst for transit-oriented development. In the 19th century, the original station gave rise to hotels and retail amenities unmatched in the city. In the decades following its redevelopment and branding as Grand Central Station, surrounding blocks became home to the city's second office district, comprised of some of the most iconic skyscrapers of 20th-century America, and reminding us of the bold thinking that typifies the city's architectural fabric. The now obsolete Grand Hyatt sits on what was once hailed as the world's greatest skyscraper corner. Unfortunately, the site today fails to live up to the spirit of integrated transportation and development so important to the Grand Central block, and instead serves as an unforgiving foil to the historic terminal. 175 Park Avenue seeks to rectify that. The proposed building will restore a sense of vitality to this corner, next to one of the city's most important transit hubs, through exciting and innovative engineering that builds on and integrates the transit and public realm underpinnings of the terminal itself. It is, along with the one or two sites opposite Penn Station, among the locations most suited to high-density development in all of Manhattan, connecting tenants directly with transport and minimizing congestion on streets and the surrounding sidewalks. Not taking full advantage of this proximity would be a missed opportunity. At the time, the original construction of Grand Central Terminal was no small feat. The combination of the large transparent openings and complex ramping systems that constitute the terminal's design were a direct response to uniquely challenging conditions on the site. Facing similar constraints, namely the subway platforms, rail lines, and commuter passages that sit below the Grand Hyatt, the 175 Park Avenue design team has identified equally innovative solutions. The design presented today is rich with creative engineering and design thinking that allows the building to rise up through the station below, greatly rationalizing and improving general mobility, the user experience, and the neighborhood's public realm. Even more so than One Vanderbilt nearby, the transit components to this project are of incalculable value to users and to future visitors to Grand Central. Indeed, no other site in a district could provide them in such a comprehensive way. 175 Park Avenue enhances the commuter experience through a new transit hall and a dedicated subway entrance, improvements to the subway mezzanine, and a new and much-needed below-grade connection to east side access and the Metro North tracks. Together, these improvements will greatly improve circulation and reduce congestion, allowing Grand Central to accommodate not only the increasing flows of commuters expected upon completion of east side access, but also the vast number of visitors to New York who never take a commuter train, but instead come to celebrate and enjoy an important landmark. Simply put, this project is a critical component in ensuring that future growth in commutation, both from Long Island and Westchester, can be accommodated without undermining one of the great buildings and public spaces of our city, Grand Central Terminal. The question of harmony before the Commission is undoubtedly an important one. 175 Park Avenue very much radiates the spirit of the majestic 1913 remake of Grand Central, achieving harmony with and improving its surroundings by cleverly stacking underground connections and passageways to maximize mobility and by creating much-needed open space around the terminal itself. It does so in an undoubtedly bold and modern way, but with very much the same engineering and public realm inspirations as the original terminal. This project is an unparalleled opportunity to put density where it most belongs, quite literally on top of transit, and simultaneously honor one of the city's greatest landmarks as it moves into its second century of service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next we have Emily Bach, followed by Will Neuwirth.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Emily Bach. I'm reading written testimony for Greg Pascarelli from Shop Architects. Chair Carol and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on this important project for our beloved city. My name is Greg Pascarelli, founding principal of Shop Architects here in Lower Manhattan. The redevelopment of the Grand Hyatt site presents the challenge of creating a 21st office building in setting with important historic landmarks. Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill have designed a bold tower with impressive public and transit realms to ensure the Grand Central Tower will continue to shine as one of our greatest landmarks. As we all know, the most sustainable thing we can do for our cities is build density next to mass transit. This project is the definition of that goal and will help to ensure that an important nexus of our city, represented by Grand Central, will continue to thrive well into the 21st century. This is what Grand Central wants most of all. 175 Park Avenue will be an impressive contemporary contribution to Midtown. The proposed building tapers inwards at its base, providing much-needed relief to the urban space around Grand Central. This not only exposes the terminal's eastern facade from 42nd Street, but allows for an abundance of new public space situated at the viaduct level. This valuable addition to Midtown's public and civic realm will serve as a viewing platform that enhances Grand Central's presence and allows pedestrians to experience a landmark up close and at a human scale. The building's materiality, from its express structure to the transparent core, demonstrates a comprehensive approach to creating harmony through greater visibility and access to Grand Central. It does so at a scale that responds to the terminal and its signature features and flourishes. The 175 Park facade introduces texture and articulation, taking cues from Grand Central, but in an exhilarating new way. The last thing we need is another textureless, all-glass tower. SOM has boldly threaded the needle between SOM has boldly threaded the needle between a contemporary design and one that connects with city at multiple scales. Through its confident contemporary form, One Seventy Five Park Avenue will achieve harmony through contrast. It will remind the public of Grand Central's enduring history while also making it a vital part of our present and future. Rather than leave Grand Central in the past, let's bring it along with us and let it be a vital part of the century as well. Respectfully submitted, Greg Pascarelli. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Will Neuwirth, followed by Helene Sank.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Neuwirth, and I'm reading written testimony on behalf of Annabelle Seldor. Dear Miss Carol and Commissioners, I write to you today to express my enthusiastic support for Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill's proposal for One Seventy Five Park Avenue. It is evidently clear that SOM has carefully and thoughtfully considered the relationship between its proposed project and Grand Central Terminal, how the proposed building meets the ground, how it responds to and enhances the architectural character and function of the magnificent Grand Central Terminal, and how it impacts the quality of the pedestrian experience along Forty Second Street and in the underground networks below. One Seventy Five Park touches down with a slightly tapered massing and encircled with public space at the elevated height of the viaduct, providing breathing space as well as new access from which to appreciate Grand Central Terminal. This is no small feat to achieve. Sitting on a challenging site above an infrastructural hub, the Terminal itself was highly innovative for its time. One Seventy Five Park meets the Terminal's ingenuity with its own. Other gestures, such as the building symmetry and setbacks, reference the architecture of the Terminal as well as other nearby landmark, the Chrysler Building. I believe the exposed structural system has been used to great effect, a modern nod to the ornamentation of both Grand Central Terminal and the Chrysler Building. The geometry and the relief and texture of the ribbed cables of One Seventy Five Park creates a dynamic synergy between the historic landmarks that is the contemporary, while remaining true to the 21st century era belongs to. Furthermore, One Seventy Five Park greatly enhances the public realm, both below and above grade. The improvements to transit infrastructure below will help future-proof Grand Central Terminal, easing congestion and enhancing safety. The creation of the new public space above is a much-needed addition to the area for tourists, commuters, and office workers alike. It makes a physical connection between the two buildings. There are many layers of history in New York City. Respecting these layers and the architecture of previous eras does not mean mimicking them. One Seventy Five Park is big, bold, and innovative, much like Grand Central Terminal was over 100 years ago. It harmonizes with the Terminal in its various massing, aesthetic, and functional choices. But more than that, One Seventy Five Park pays homage to the most quintessential New York City structure, its attitude. Sincerely, Annabelle Seldor.
Okay, thank you. And then I think our final speaker, Helene Sank. And I think you're good to go. We can see you.
You can see me? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Helene Sank, Deputy Director in the Transit Oriented Development Group at the MTA. And today I'm here to provide the transportation planning perspective for the proposed improvements connecting Grand Central Subway Station with Grand Central Terminal in conjunction with the redevelopment of the Grand Hyatt Hotel. As you know, Grand Central Station is served by three subway lines, the Lexington Line to the 456, Flushing Line, number seven, and the Shuttle. The northerly half of the Lexington Line platform, which runs diagonally under the Hyatt, are among the subway systems most heavily used. Most of the exiting is concentrated at what we refer to as the R238 exit. The majority of passengers exiting the subway make a beeline for the high concentration of office buildings on Park Avenue, Madison Avenue, and Fifth Avenue north of Grand Central Terminal, walking through the main hall of Grand Central Terminal. This northwest flow through the main hall of Grand Central Terminal is the largest passenger movement to and from the Grand Central Subway Station. MTA's primary goal in developing the transit improvements with the Hyatt developer was to create new access to the center of the Lexington Line platform. This access would be aligned with the main passenger flow to the northwest and the main hall of Grand Central Terminal. A new center diagonal stair from the Terminal, street level down to the subway mezzanine level, would accommodate six pedestrian lanes. Engineering constraints of the Terminal put this new diagonal stair only in one spot, which then requires the main fare control area, the turnstiles, from the subway mezzanine level to be relocated up to the Terminal level. This additional transit capacity requires additional circulation space at street level, which is provided by the space referred to as the new transit hall, directly east of the Forty Second Street passageway. This design requires direct sightlines and circulation to the stair from primary locations in Grand Central Terminal. Lack of transparency or connections between the transit hall, Grand Central Terminal, and the Forty Second Street passageway will inhibit the efficacy of transit improvements delivered as part of this project. It's imperative that the transit hall remain open to both the Lexington passageway and the Forty Second Street passageway as currently planned. While we understand a desire to demarcate where Grand Central Terminal ends and Lot 30 begins, the demarcation between the Terminal and the transit hall can be accomplished through the use of distinct yet sympathetic materials to the Terminal or other architectural features which would provide visual clues and delineate the boundaries of a landmark without sacrificing the sightlines and physical connections through this passageway. The Forty Second Street passageway has been modified many times over its life in order to meet the evolving demands of the Terminal. And we believe that this modification is one that will appropriately accommodate growth in intermodal moves in a manner that is functional and appropriate for the historic Terminal. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And with that, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
Sarah, we can't hear you.
All right. Rich, do we have any additional written testimony?
Yes, we do. We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Five, and they recommended denial of an LPC report stating there wasn't a harmonious relationship between the proposed building and the Grand Central Terminal but recommended approval for the passageway improvements. We also received seven letters of support, including some from individuals and organizations who spoke during testimony, and six in opposition, also including from some individuals and organizations who spoke during testimony.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicant team and ask if you would like to address any of the comments raised in the testimony.
I think we'd like to speak very briefly in response to some of the testimony or the response we know that we received, for example, from Community Board Five. And we'd like to say that in response, that we had reached out in a very proactive way, and we respect and are very grateful for the suggestions and the feedback that we received. We'd like to underscore that we were very responsive even in advance. We had a very proactive and robust community outreach program, which of course included the Community Board, which was an obligation, but we also spoke with many other participants in preservation and planning and transportation communities. And we tried our best to incorporate all of their comments and suggestions as was feasible and possible. And specifically, in response to some of the comments, the very helpful comments that we got from Community Board Five, we did change the cladding, for example, of the escalators in our lobby, clad them in stone, which made them much more, we think, we saw it softened down their texture and feel and gave them a much more contextual feel within the area of the lobby. And as much as we appreciate the feedback that we received, we also wanted to reinforce our confidence in the boldness and the statement of the building. We're very much aware that it's a contemporary building and intentionally so, because we feel that there is a purpose here, as others have spoken, I think even more eloquently than I can say now. We're looking to the future with this, although we are acknowledging the past, and we hope that we've incorporated it, the past, in a very intelligent way, in a very sensitive way. The streetscape, as another example, is also very, very important to us, and we know that CB Five had some comments specific to it. We've addressed the streetscape in both an architectural and a very urbanistic way. It's a very active streetscape at the moment, and we feel that some of the gestures that we made in terms of widening the sidewalk, providing additional access into and out of the building, making it very clear as to the various functions, creating opportunities to access both the interior activities as well as the plazas above and transit below, are done in a very sensitive and, we think, very clear way. And all of that has been inspired by the way that Grand Central has so successfully influenced other projects as well. The fact that there is a very complicated system of movement through the building in terms of pedestrian circulation as well as access to all of the infrastructure, but the way that people are encouraged to move in a seamless and intuitive way has informed the decisions that we've made, and we think that we've done a very good job in making it very clear as to where people go, the options that they have, and doing it in a very comfortable and intuitive, seamless way. So with that, we'd like to say that we're proud of what we've done. We think that it's an extraordinary building, are looking to the future, and we're happy to answer any other questions that may come up.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. I'm going to start to request to unmute all of you so that we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So look for my request and accept it. All right. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we're going to begin our discussion. And I want to again thank everyone today who participated. I think that the presentation was very clear and helpful, and the testimony was also very thoughtful, so I look forward to our discussion. And just to give us a framework for our discussion, Commissioners, there are two applications before us. One, as you've heard, is an application for a report to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 81-642 of the zoning resolution concerning the harmonious relationship between a new building and Grand Central Terminal. This is an advisory report because the new building is not designated because the zoning resolution does not require LPC affirmatively find the harmonious relationship. But we will have a full discussion and include those comments. The second application is for work affecting the landmark site, and that includes the changes to the interior passageway as well as the new sidewalk on the viaduct. And we are advisory on this application because by statute, the MTA, which owns the Terminal, is not subject to local land laws. Nevertheless, MTA has sought LPC comments, and while we're advisory, you should be applying the appropriateness standards we typically use when considering the appropriateness of these aspects of the work which affects the landmark site. So as we comment today, if you can keep your comments in this framework and separate them into these two groups, one, the question and your thoughts on the harmonious relationship, and two, your comments on the proposed work on the landmark site. Okay. So, whoops. If there is somebody not a Commissioner, if you can mute yourself. Okay, so Commissioners, let's go ahead and start our discussion. We'll just go start at the head of the table and go around. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you lead the discussion on this one?
Sure. With regard to the harmonious relationship, I've looked over these drawings. I've really mulled about this a great deal. And I have a fundamental near hatred of the monster towers that are being constructed in New York City. But that's really not part of this discussion. And what's part of this discussion for me is the relationship between what we have on the ground. And as far as I'm concerned, there is absolutely no dissonant note between Grand Central Station and this new building. In fact, I find it, I find the relationship to be separate enough that there is a harmony in almost a musical sense to me. There is this massive Grand Central Terminal and this rather ethereal. I mean, I think people are talking about this thing being massive. I don't see it that way at all. And I relish the fact that you can actually see through to the, to Grand Central Terminal. And so, you know, I was given a little bit of pause by Attorney Hiller's statement, and I, and I'm a little bit cautious about us making a decision on this, on the basis of what we're being asked to do, if in fact it's not something that has a legal basis. Nevertheless, in terms of you asking me if I consider this to be harmonious, I say yes, fundamentally. With regard to the changes on the interior, I have to say, the one vestige of Grand Central Terminal that is evocative to me of Penn Station, that disgusting piece of transit downtown, it's that entrance to the subway, which is just hell on earth. And anything that can be done to improve that, I think, is worthy. And in fact, I think this has been a very, very thoughtful effort on the part of the architects, and I can, I can consider it all appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sarah, Sarah, can I just make sure everyone's, what Michael said, I just want to clarify. Mr. Hiller's comments were directed to the second application for the interior work on the station. It didn't have to do with the first harmonious relationship finding that comes to us through the zoning resolution, just so everyone's clear.
Okay, great. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I was, you know, as you know, Grand Central is one of the most admired landmarks in the city of New York, and is a spectacular piece of engineering and architecture. And I, as a matter of fact, go through there every day, even during the pandemic, coming to work, this is a major transfer. So I can identify with what Commissioner Devonshire just said about it is an improvement, and I'm glad to see, I forgot all about the earlier Bayreuth-Blunderbell improvement regarding the second part, which is the connection. I think the first iteration, I forgot, there's a ramp that was dividing the concourse leading into it. It is, in terms of improvement and circulation and visibility landmark, it is, it is an improvement. And having said that, I would say that in terms of the harmonious relationship, I only look at it from the base, because, you know, as Commissioner Devonshire said about this harmonious is more of a different matter, whereas versus it is what is being presented, obviously. If we look at the analysis of the Grand Central Terminal, it is of a larger scale entrance at the staircase leading into the side.
Commissioner Chen, I'm having difficulty hearing you. Maybe if you are speaking closer to the microphone.
This better.
Yeah, and I think, I think Commissioner Chen, you have to repeat some of it because we couldn't hear a bunch of it, so the record's not clear, yeah.
Okay, so as I said, related to the second part, I go, you know, this is one of the, you know, piece of marvel and engineering-wise, as well as, as well as, you know, is well-known worldwide, how nice this is, this is a spectacular piece of landmark in the world, and I go through it every day, so I can attest to the circulation improvement. And it's a credit to Bayreuth-Blunderbell for improving the earlier version, and which is now, hopefully, the proposal seems to be an improvement, obviously. There are some areas that we can make improvement suggestions, but obviously we're advisory. As to the harmonious part, I'm going to just limit myself to the base. As to the harmonious part, I'm going to just limit myself to the base in terms of, because I'm not speak about what is above, because, you know, the rendering and the things like that. I would say that from the standpoint of relating to the scale and the symmetry along 42nd Street in context between Chrysler Building, between the Grand Central and across the street from the Channing Building, there is a triangular relationship between the twos. For me, it's almost like you're being bookended by two major landmarks of the world renowned, you know, the beautiful Chrysler Building with the gargoyles and the eagles, and then there's this thing. However, you know, the limitation, the severe limitation, obviously, is that you have to transfer all on these four points. And that is, so I would say the applicant, the Skidmore Owens had done a beautiful engineering job by unfolding the curtain by treating it as a major entrance into, into a major transit hub, you know, the Park Avenue Viaduct. So it is what created Grand Central, and it is about what necessitate, in this instance, the limitation and constraint or the straitjacket in this decision. So I think they have done a good job by unveiling the curtain. My concern a little bit is making sure that it does not compete with Grand Central, meaning that this becomes a massive, massive, and so it will, but in a way, I think, might to hear the applicant, maybe to the lowering of the ceiling and comparing, you know, being, paying homage to the height of the Grand Central and being below that, that is something that I think could be, could be, I can, I can accept that. So it is, but I would say overall, the relationship at the base, based on what is being presented, I can see the election that I have aside, but obviously from this side, I would say, I agree with Commissioner Devonshire that it could be considered harmonious.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letty.
Well, I have to say that, before I talk about this building and the harmonious relationship, that I'm not going to be sorry to see the Grand Hyatt leave this location. When I think about certain kinds of buildings and architecture that I don't think have had a wonderful impact on the landscape of the city, in this instance, I would call that building sort of like one of the Darth Vader buildings of New York City. So I'll be glad to see it go. And, and I, you know, I spent many years trying to understand that very narrow passageway that led in off of 42nd Street from that building, and who was thinking about that? Or there obviously no one was thinking about that because it was like walking into a funnel and just, you know, I couldn't wait to get through it. So from, just in terms of the improvements that are being made from a public transportation access standpoint and from a navigation standpoint, as you move through, into and through Grand Central, I think this has been very successful, is very successful, and I'm looking forward to seeing this opening up that we've been introduced to today in the presentation. And it does build on the good work that Bart Blinderbell did because their improvements really helped make the experience of Grand Central sort of more human, and it also helped, and the work that they did also helped make Grand Central more usable on multiple levels in so many ways. But this will add to that, and I think it's going to be welcomed by many people. And the access to the viaduct will be interesting because it will provide an opportunity to really take a closer look at both buildings from the outside and just provide an opportunity for people to sit and hang out on what is a very busy street and intersection. You know, this is a very challenging site, and I do have to commend the, the architects for, for being very creative and strategic about how they approached it. You know, in some ways, I'm not that, I have to say, I don't entirely love how the building opens up at the bottom. You know, I like the reference, I think the reference to the opening as a curtain is a nice way to look at it, but when I look at it in relationship to the overall structure, which I feel is elegant, it does kind of look like the bloomers or pantalons, and I wish there were another way it could hit the ground. That, that said, I do think it's successful. And if you, if you look at, you know, just, I would say page 40 in the presentation, you can see that through the skeleton, the skeleton that's been created and is opened up at the base, that there are actually wonderful views to the side of the building that we've never had before. Then that would be the next slide. And, and it's nice to, nice to get that. It almost gives some breath and air to, to the Grand Central building that I don't think we were able to experience because it was sandwiched right up against the Grand Hyatt. I like, and I like seeing the inner workings of the lobby and the, I love the fact that we'll be able to, to see New Yorkers and visitors, you know, milling through the site to the station, to work. I think that's all very successful. I do want to say, and we haven't really spent any time on the building itself, and I know this is not our bailiwick, but this is going to be a big building. I mean, it's going to be the second tallest building in the city after the World Trade Center. I think it's going to be about almost 1,600, you know, forty-something feet, eighty-three stories tall. So it's going to have a big impact on landscape. And I am feeling at this moment that it's going to be a good one. Making, I think the skeletal structure will help take a building that's going to have a lot of bulk and make it feel lighter and more porous, not only at the base, but also as you move up. And I do appreciate the nod to the Chrysler Building and the other, and some of the other buildings in the surrounding area that will, I think, help tie it in from a forward-looking perspective and a rearview mirror perspective. So I think this building is going to, I think this is going to work on a number of levels, and I'm excited about it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Commissioner Jefferson, you're muted.
I unmuted myself once again. This is a, I think this is a wonderful project, and it shows what, what you can do with the high-rise type. You can have a base, and then you have something on top of it, you know? So the base can relate to other buildings on the pedestrian level, and at the same time, you could add something on top of it that doesn't have to relate. People were talking about harmony. There's no harmony here. This is all contrast. And that contrast is what makes Grand Central so visible and powerful is because of that contrast. And this, these things coming down, these curtains that are peeled back and diffuse. I mean, there's lessons to be learned from this, I think. And I think it works, you know? I'm not so sure about, originally, I wasn't sure about the stair. I thought that it should go in a different axis because it was making this a little too busy, this piece. But then I thought, you know, it's fine. It's active, it's different. In terms of the interiors, I mean, what they're adding to it, bringing in natural light and expanding the corridors, I mean, who can complain about that? Just a nice, good, good job, you know? So I recommend it.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
I think the first issue that I, we are all probably trying to grapple with is this question of harmonious relationship. And I, I think what I came up with is that, you know, the, we can only evaluate harmonious relationship when we experience the, the new building and Grand Central together. So that takes out of my purview any concern about the, you know, the massive height of the building, because you can't experience that height except largely from a distance. So I'm not worried about, whereas I may, I may not like the way it looks from, from the FDR, but that's not the view that we're talking about when we talk about harmonious relationship. The experience that we're talking about for a harmonious relationship is the experience of the landmark and this building from the street. And these views, and this is what we asked for last time we saw this, we asked for a much clearer set of images for these street views, and that's what we got. And what I got from that is that there are at least three points of view from which we have enhanced the public's ability to experience the landmark. One being the view directly from the east or southeast. One is from the concourse itself, and the third is from the views through like this. And, and so it has, maybe by necessity, it has been designed, it has been engineered to allow us these additional views. And in that sense, it is harmonious and at a minimum substantially more harmonious than what preceded it. And I understand that some of the people who testified are concerned about, seem to conclude that any tower of this size is non-harmonious, and I don't, I don't see that as the issue. I see, for me, I'm concerned about how much of Grand Central I get to see, the angles from which I get to see it, the exposure of the side of that building to, to people on that concourse. I think it's all tremendous, and that's harmonious to me. As far as the 42nd Street passage is concerned, I set aside all of the, you know, the reasoning for doing it. The question for me is really all about materials and proportions, and, and these kinds of changes to the passages in Grand Central have been done in several areas, and they are very respectful of the materials and the proportions, and that's all there is to it. So I find that to be appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
So, you know, I'm just as others, struggling a little bit with the term harmonious and the way to, to give it meaning or to interpret it. And I think that what, the way that I, and I agree with Commissioner Jefferson about this notion of harmonic contrast rather than sort of, you know, consonance, it's, it's, it's a stronger way to think about kind of the notion that there are different, that these are different octave, different scales, different keys, and that that's, that's, that's interesting. It doesn't, it doesn't quite help it to get to the definition or to the interpretation of harmony here. But if you don't mind, just turning to page 27, I think it's actually not labeled, but it's after 26. And, and it's, it's a first, this one, yeah, that was the one, okay. Yeah. And so here's a, here's a rational thing to do, to take these kind of datum lines from the historic building to try to understand where there is some kind of relationship, even though the kind of the scale of the materials, the scale of the structure is so very different and in contrast. So this is interesting because the two datum lines are marked, the top of the statue and the, and the top of kind of the corners before the roof begins. The problem is that when you go to page 40, James, after, after we recognize that they've charted that, those data, when you go to page 40 here, you realize that actually, the experience of, of Grand Central is truncated, that those lines that they were carrying or suggesting, at least from what I understand in terms of this rendering, are truncated in terms of what you can see of that, you know, the, the, the top of the build, top of Grand Central through that dropped kind of plenum that is the under, in a sense, the underside of the, of the space between the structure and, and the, and the solid core. And I think that this is, this brings to mind a kind of, a missed, missed opportunity, and I would say a hope for, like, really taking this to a new, to another place. Because I, I'm in agreement with lots of people who have expressed the possibility that this might have a certain kind of positive heroic quality that might, that might be, I don't know, a kind of a good thing.
You can't talk.
Yeah, so my issue here has to do with the experience on the plazas and, and the ways in which one can sort of be with both buildings, but really, really understand Grand Central. And I, and, you know, the owner of this building is familiar with innovative plazas. Seagram's didn't have to give up all that ground. The generosity of the plaza is spectacular in its defiance of the, of the kind of the street wall of Park Avenue. So too, another Skidmore project in Gordon Bunshaft's across the way, and Leverhouse with the kind of the turn of, of the building again against the rhythm. The opening that it created in terms of the kind of, the plaza experience or the second floor experience, in the case of Lever, is so interesting and dramatic and, and, and in a sense, you know, above and beyond what might have been called for, for the sake of, of the public, for the sake of space. And I think here, this plaza has not been taken all the way. It hasn't gone all the way. Now, maybe all the way, there seems to be a kind of squeezing, there's a whole lot of circulation, there's a whole lot of escalating escalators, but there really isn't kind of a place to be yet. And I'm not sure if that tends to be, is a horizontal condition, or in this case, might it be a vertical condition, that if this, the underside of this moment here that we're looking at is really, you know, kind of Gothic and really towering openly, so that you might be able, and I don't know what this means structurally, obviously, so that you might be able to actually see the full height of the building beyond, I think that that will change, that will create a harmony of sorts of simultaneity of both, both grandeur, you know, the grandeur of both buildings. And I, I think that that's kind of what's missing here. There's a lot of solving. This solves a lot of issues, gets the structure where it needs to be, it gets, deals with street walls, fantastic interpretation of the kind of the curtain wall pulled away in order to, to, to reveal the structure, but also to be able to use the space. But I think that the plaza itself needs to go to that next level of true generosity through the public domain and true sort of interact, real harmonic interaction with the sightlines, the, the, the giant, the grandeur that is Grand Central. So this is where the So this is where the opportunity is, and I would hope that they might take it yet one step.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Holford-Smith.
Yes, thank you. Well, when I first saw this, of course, it took me aback because it is such a massive building. And I agree with Commissioner Devonshire on the super tallness in the city, but that's not what's before us. And I also struggled with the massiveness of the columns, but I was starting to think about it more, and I think I can appreciate what Commissioner Jefferson said about the contrast, that the harmony between the two is achieved by this contrast. That this massive structure that has to come down in these few locations because of the tracks that are below it, you know, they've taken that and they've made a very creative solution to exposing the structure and making a metaphor for this sort of curtain opening that relates back to the facade of Grand Central. Now, whether that's ever perceived, you know, but maybe not, but it's a sort of a method they use to help sort of organize the facade. But I think that I can find the harmonious relationship is that the building is, you know, it is a massive building, but it's respectful of Grand Central, and it gives the landmark breathing room and the ability to see it in the round that we've lost for all these years with the old Hyatt that was just sort of smack up against it. And I think being able to activate that upper level will be really, you know, be able to experience both buildings and other buildings in the midtown area move from a unique vantage point that I think is, will be a great amenity. And as far as the 42nd Street passage, I think that it's appropriate in the way it relates to the recent architecture, and, you know, it'll obviously open up more space for, what's needed now and for increased ridership through Grand Central in the future. So I can find the way they've done that to be appropriate as well.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
All right. Well, I must have been on a different presentation, I apologize. But I have a very, I have a different view, and I had to write it down, so forgive me. The code section that's cited requires the harmonious relationship. It is an open-ended requirement. It doesn't specify a scope or a limit, in my opinion, the way I read the regulation. Evidently, customarily, we are intended to look at it as a streetscape effect or from the street view. I don't see that in the text or in the context of the regulation. The phrase is used elsewhere in the zoning resolution for similar purposes without any explicit or implied definition to restriction. So I question our, limiting our view to the base without seeing city planning documentation, that was the intention of the language. It, you know, just on a plain reading of the text, I don't see it. So I personally don't understand why that, or it doesn't make any sense to me, why that would be the limitation on the evaluation. There's no doubt that the city zoning code encourages the modification of this property into a very large building, while at the same time, it imposes a requirement for some kind of historically sensitive relationship to the unique site. It didn't have to do that. I don't think that this site can't be, have a large building on it. A skilled, sensitive, modern design can successfully relate to a historic environment while creating a new scale in a modern expression. This project, in my opinion, is a textbook definition of a dissonant relationship between a landmark and a new development. Scale, massing, material, detail, historic precedent are all, in gross terms, the way we evaluate relationships between old buildings and new ones. By every measure, in my opinion, this proposal fails to meet anything that I could conceive of as harmonious. The design is scaleless, introverted, and anonymous. I don't think it should be built on this site. The scale reminds me of Constantine's head in Rome. The head looks like a head, it has proportion, it's insistent, but it's 10 feet tall, which is bigger than any head I've ever encountered in my life. And it's that scale, it's the disparity in the scale that makes the impression, and you can't disregard that when putting that head next to my head. By the same token, I just, you know, there's no escaping that this building is very big. Its purported relationships with Grand Central all occur at the very bottom of the very base of this design, the gathered curtains that, below the mostly straight, banded, vertically-oriented building above. The scale of the gestures is evaluated by looking at the entire building. Relative to that, the terminal is in a different universe. The proposed design totally changes the scale of its environs, resetting the metric for the landmark, making the terminal look small and out of scale. The unfortunate diagram in the presentation that referred to symmetry, I don't remember what page that was, revealed this depressing effect. Flanked by one Vanderbilt, and now this, the city will have made the terminal look shrunk and forlorn like those photographs of cranky holdouts in boomtown Chinese cities, rapidly clinging to their homely homesteads, artifacts standing astride the rush of progress. The massing emphasizes this scalelessness. The flat, undifferentiated 42nd Street facade rises from street to the top almost as a single, slightly undulating plane, is completely antithetical to the area and to Grand Central. Most of the streetscapes that have framed Grand Central since it was built have had a three-dimensional character with ins and outs, courtyard variations and skyline. The Commodore Hotel, like many of the other buildings in Terminal City, was deeply articulated with masses that rose towards the sky with scale and with proportion. The Chrysler Building similarly has setbacks and has an interplay of volumes as it rises. The massings break down the scale of these buildings, which are big buildings, making the terminal seem big even though it's the lowest building in the group. One Vanderbilt, as you can see from this image, at least gestures in that direction with its deeply recessed base, its knotted corners. There's a sense of relationship to its environs that is at least gesturing towards effective. The massings break down the scale of these buildings, making the terminal seem big. The buildings' street walls are, this building's street walls are sheer all the way to the top, slipping over the setbacks like a melting ice pop. The mass base is similarly problematic for me. The new building continues the plinth by flipping up the expression of a vertical solid wall at Grand Central into a horizontal plane that slopes down with a glass infill below. The design takes away the weight of a plinth, which is its, you know, its vertical, its visual job is to support the thing on top with a box, instead replacing it with a design that reminds me of symmetrical highway off-ramps, open underneath, glazed, penetrated. It, to me, defies the base. It doesn't extend it. The material and detail similarly are antithetical to the mostly masonry context of Grand Central and to the environment. Even the Pan Am Building, hardly a contextual structure, integrates masonry into its banal fabric. The cable-like steel piers have turned a seriously adventurous, exciting structural scheme into a swooping decorative design that reminds me of Minoru Yamasaki with its symmetry and its kind of neo-Gothic top. I don't see how that design language relates in any way to Grand Central's bozart design. The historical precedence similarly, it doesn't work. The original Terminal City design shows us exactly what the designers and planners who created Grand Central would have considered a harmonious relationship between a terminal and its environs. The original design originally was low-rise, set at a height similar to the station itself. The realized Terminal City buildings were higher, but their uniform height, massing and detailing and materiality enabled the setting to frame and aggrandize the terminal, being secondary to the terminal even though they were bigger. The Commodore was part of that ensemble. This volume still reads through the tacky glass facades. Harmonizing at the level of massing and scale even as it lacks detail or materiality, no such statement can be made for this proposal. Even the setbacks don't gesture to the Terminal City buildings that are still extant, operating instead on a scale wholly internal to its own anomalous proportioning system. So for all these reasons, it's my view that this project is disharmonious, as disharmonious as it could be to New York City's most important landmark. The proposed changes at the concourse level seem modest and sensitive. The skylights are not intrusive to the concourse. The interior modifications generally deserve a positive report, I think. They maintain the identity of the landmark while opening it to new development. My only request is that the team work with it, work on the definition of that volume of that passageway as it moves north to align with the main concourse. That definition kind of falls apart as you get beyond the ramp down to the lower level.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, I'm sorry I skipped over you, so please go ahead.
It's okay. Well, I have a different view than Michael. It took me a while to get there, but anyway, I think that, at first, I think it's an extremely thoughtful approach. I don't find that the height in itself makes it non-harmonious since Grand Central exists in an environment of multiple tall buildings and skyscrapers. And the previous buildings on this site included the Grand Hyatt, including the Grand Hyatt, were tall structures. And while this is much taller, I don't think the difference in tallness makes it automatically non-harmonious. I did have to get beyond its striking design, the striking design of the new building, to look at the details and elements that I could find harmonious. And what I do find harmonic resonance in the design is the masonry plinth, which creates a simplified, modern echo of elements of the terminal and its rhythm of solids and voids, while its lower height and setback from the street, I think, help to keep it subordinate to the terminal. I think its scale allows the front of the terminal to preserve the terminal's monumental prominence in the streetscape. The open column-supported base opens up views of the terminal, which are not, would not possible with the Grand Hyatt or would not be possible with any construction that didn't have a lot of openness to the design at the bottom. I think the matte metal of the panels is warmer and non-reflective and more harmonious with the terminal as a result with the masonry of the terminal. I think that the new, almost 24,000 square feet of surrounding public access space, which permits pedestrian views to the eastern side of the terminal, both visually and physically, is a very important improvement to access to this historic building. I think that the fact that the new building is visible in the round, for me, resonates with the design of the terminal, which is also intended to be visible in the round. The geometries and rhythm of the new structure, in my view, echo art deco elements, the diamonds, the triangles, the rectangles of the steel structure. Oddly enough, somehow its design serves memories of the Chrysler Building for me, even though it obviously looks nothing like the Chrysler Building. But I see these geometries and rhythm as somehow having an echo to the art deco design. The interior design, the design of the interior, creating new, larger circulation spaces and openings, I find totally appropriate and necessary to open up to circulation and flow of the interior. And I think that the changes are in no way destructive of historic materials or of the historic design approach.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you all commissioners for your thoughtful comments and on the many aspects of these two applications. So I think where we are is we have a consensus to approve the changes to the interior, and I think we also have enough votes to issue a favorable report concerning the harmonious relationship. And I think what we'll do is, Commissioner Devonshire, if you could make the motion on the interior, that's the second report, and I'll do the motion on the harmonious relationship. We have some basic ideas, and I think what we will do is also after this, incorporate all of the comments that we've heard as well into that so that anything that's missing in the base findings that we have can be flushed out to really reflect your comments. And before we get to the motions, I do want to just note for the record that the presentations were emailed, as all presentations are, to the commissioners in advance of the hearing. And so as some commissioners talked about seeing this before, that was not done in a group or any group setting or in any environment in which the commissioners spoke to each other. Commissioners looked at these individually, and some did ask for some additional materials if they looked for them. So just wanted to note that for the record.
And just further note that all those conversations were solely with staff.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make the second motion?
Sure. Matter of LPC 2105603, 71105 East 42nd Street, Grand Central Terminal, an individual and interior landmark. An application to alter the viaduct sidewalk in the 42nd Street passage to connect to an adjacent new building. I find that the work will help improve and expand public accessibility without eliminating or damaging any significant architectural features, that the retention of the historic balustrade and handrail will maintain visual cues to the original footprint of the upper level of the terminal. That replacement of the existing modern paving and bottles with new paving and bottles adjoining the new paving at the proposed neighboring building will be a minor alteration, which will not detract from any design features of the building. That the enlargement of select openings on the interior corridor and elimination of infill at these bays will not significantly diminish the sense of solidity of this wall. That the enlarged openings for the new passageways will be consistent with the existing passageway openings throughout the terminal corridors in terms of scale and will relate well to the historic circulation pattern of the corridors. That the proposed details, materials and finishes of the enlarged opening surrounds will match the historic details, materials and finishes, thereby helping to maintain the unity of the design. That the simply designed glass infill within an existing opening will maintain a sense of the void to be compatible with the infill at storefront bays throughout the corridor. And that the cumulative effect of the modifications will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of this designated individual and interior landmark.
All right. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson, are you there? You are muted. Nope.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford-Smith.
Aye.
Okay. With ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And so that one is approved and will issue a favorable report. Okay. And in the matter of docket number 21-05602, 71 to 105 East 42nd Street, Grand Central Terminal, individual and interior landmark, a French Bozart-style railroad terminal designed by Reed and Stem and Warren and Wetmore and built in 1903 to 13, application is for an advisory review pursuant to zoning resolution section 81, I believe it, 642, concerning the harmonious relationship of a new building and Grand Central Terminal. With respect to the relationship between the new building and Grand Central Terminal, I find that the form and materiality of the new building, featuring a wide plinth with a narrower centered tower and large expanses of clear glazing aligning with the upper level. a narrower centered tower and large expanses of clear glazing aligning with the upper level of Grand Central Terminal, will enhance views of the terminal from the east, which are currently obscured by the existing building. That the elevated public terrace near the east side of the terminal will enhance the public's ability to appreciate the design and form of the historic terminal by providing new access to the east facade. That singeing, the singeing of the tower structure at the base of the building will allow views of the east facade of the terminal through the new building. That the alignment of the proposed building's plinth with the terminal's plinth will help to provide harmonious scale relationships between the base of the new building and the terminal. That the material and finish of the stone cladding of the core and base of the building will relate well to the historic terminal's material and finish palettes. That the muted tones of the proposed stone cladding and painted metal clad structural elements combined with their modern detailing will help to be harmonious with the historic material and finish palette of the terminal, while also maintaining a clear distinction between the historic, adjoining historic and modern plinth. That the cumulative effect of the detailing, including the tapering and fluting of the metal clad structural framing and the diagonal grid frame of the glazing system, will help the base of the tower to maintain a human scale and level of ornamentation, which will be harmonious in scale and ornamentation of the terminal. And that the presence of this architecturally prominent building, designed with the contemporary materials and forms, while subtly referencing significant architectural features of Grand Central Terminal, will be a strong counterpoint, our harmonic contrast, harmonic contrast to this important individual landmark, without diminishing its prominence and allowing it to be read in the round. And as I said, we can also add some of the other comments that we heard today on the harmonious relationship to flush that out a little bit more. But with that, Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I'm sorry, I still would want for it to be incorporated, the notion of actually being able to render more height underneath in what would be the mezzanine area. Yeah. Is there any way that that can be requested?
So, we'll see, we'll, what we'll do is we'll see if we have six on this motion for a favorable report, and otherwise add any other comments if we don't.
So can we pass him for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll come back. Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen. Sorry, can you repeat that?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Nay.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Well, so Chair Carroll, what should I do?
So I think, I think if you feel strongly that the relationship is not harmonious and that it would benefit from this further elevation at the base, then I would vote nay on this.
Nay.
Okay.
With eight in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
All right, great, thank you. So we will prepare that, and we have one more item for the day, so we'll move on to the next item. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And the last item of the day is number nine, LPC 21-04173, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1385, lot 29, 45 East 70th Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-French classic-style mansion designed by Armand Embry II and built in 1928 to 29, and the application is to replace decorative metal balconies, stairs and railings, and alter the perimeter fence at the rear yard.
And the applicant has joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Just click the screen to activate it, and you can advance the slides. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record, and unmute again. Mr. Ernst, if you could just unmute yourself? I'm just going to request to unmute you. I don't know if the applicant maybe is having some technical difficulty. Does the staff perhaps want to step in and maybe go through the presentation?
Yes, I can do that.
So Caroline, I'm just going to give you access to the presentation, and then if you're, if the applicant--
Oh, Edith, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, all right, so I'll--
Yeah, the unmute thing just came up. And thank you for doing that.
Sure, no problem. Let me just give you back control of the screen, and you should be good to go now.
Okay. Okay, so, good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for making time for me, and now for something entirely different from the last presentation. My name's Todd Ernst, I'm a local architect with an office in Tribeca, and now I work virtually quite a bit. But I'm here to present to you today a project that I'm working on, on the Upper East Side, 45 East 70th Street. And what we're focusing on is basically four elements as part of a rear yard renovation and redesign that we're doing. And Edith, how do I advance this?
Um, just use the arrow keys, or you can use the scroll bar on the mouse.
Okay. So, basically Cory gave us an intro as to the history of the building, and one of the main reasons why we're here today is the building is the subject of something called an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. And the building, prior to current ownership, had fallen into disrepair and had suffered a number of issues, including through the wall air conditioners and other things that were done to diminish its character and integrity. And with the MOU, our client has agreed to, they are given certain abilities to renovate, but with that, they were signed an agreement and are obligated to maintain the property in perpetuity. And that's why with the MOU, what we're do, what we're doing now in our application is asking for approval to make some modifications to the rear yard. These are approvals that are beyond staff level, and we'll get right to the heart of the matter. The current picture you see is a 1940s tax photo of the facade. It's a coquina type of limestone, a light limestone. And we'll go to the next page. Actually, Edith, can you advance that for me?
Yeah, sure, I can, let me--
My arrow key's not working.
Sure, let me just, okay, then you could just say next when you want to go to the next slide.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all the help. Here's the photo of the, of the facade as it appears today, with the coquina repaired and other elements restored. And so we can, on this facade, actually, you see up on the upper cornice area, it's actually a balustrade with heavy stone carved balusters. That's something I'm, I'm going to go, going to refer to in my presentation a little further on. And you can go to the next slide, Edith. And here is some photos, photos of the facade during designation, but prior to the MOU, and you can see the through-the-wall air conditioners. And, you know, there were other issues with the building even later than this during designation that our client worked on with the prior architect and the contractor to restore the facade. And you can go to the next photo. And as part of the MOU of restoring the facade, they were allowed to add this penthouse addition, which you see in these photos, which is essentially not visible from the street, which was part of the MOU. But it was an improvement that they were allowed to enact because of the MOU. And you can go to the next photo. And, and this is some additional photos showing the restoration of metalwork, and where I'd referred to the replacement of the coquina stone where the through-the-wall ACs were. And just a general cleaning of the facade. You can go to the next photo. And this is really the, the heart of the matter here of today's presentation. There are these two metal balconies flanking metal staircase that access the rear yard. And our proposal is to replace these with two stone balconies and a stone stair. Additionally, you'll see in other photos, the fourth component of our request is to add wood lattice tops to the masonry wall that we had approved at staff level. So these photos show the balconies, and in the context of the rear yard in the lower three photos, which is currently surrounded by a wood lattice. You can go to the next photo, Edith. More context photos showing the rear yard in its as-is condition with the wood lattice. The top is a view looking west, and then a close-up in the northwest showing the wood lattice with a, with coined wood columns. And in the bottom two photos, we're looking basically to the east towards Park Avenue. And what we see in the background is a pre-war co-op on Park Avenue that has a very large rear yard and areaway that goes down about 18 feet below our yard level. And what we also see in the, in the foreground is a three-level lattice fence. But the lowest section of that lattice is actually an existing concrete retaining wall, and you can see it's not porous at that level, and we're going to actually be constructing a wall in front of that, and then we're requesting the lattice on top for additional privacy. And you can proceed to the next photo, Edith. More context photos with just close-up details. Below the balconies, you can see in the bottom two photos on the left side, we have a very industrial grating that accesses some obsolete air conditioning equipment, so this is going to be also removed and cleaned up, but that's not part of this application. You can go to the next photo. This is the proposed, oh, I'm sorry, the existing rear yard plan, and the notes that are highlighted in red rectangles are related to our request for today, removing the balconies and removing the staircase. You can go to the next photo. This is the proposed design, and so the, basically, the four elements we're talking about are the lattice, on the, only on the east and west walls of the rear yard that we're requesting, a two-foot-high lattice, and then the addition of the stone balconies and the stone staircase at the center of the yard for access. And the rest is the context of what was already approved at staff level. You can go to the next photo. The, this, these drawings show the existing facade in the upper portion of the drawing, indicating the proposed removal of the metal balconies and the metal staircase. And the lower drawing is indicating the installation of the two new stone balconies with the stone staircase. And in this drawing, you can see that the balusters that form the guardrail or the balustrade of the balconies are mimicking what we see on the main south facade at the top floor level. You can go to the next photo, Edith. This is a three-dimensional rendering of the proposed balconies and the proposed staircase. And I'd like to mention that all of this stone is called beige hotville, which is a beige limestone that's very sympathetic with the coquina stone that the building is originally fabricated from. And it's the main stone featured in the reconstruction of the backyard and the redesign. You can go to the next photo. These are additional drawings, elevation sections. The top drawing is the existing east side facing Park Avenue that we saw in the photo with the triple lattice. And then the proposed design is the lower section with the six-foot masonry wall, and then atop that is the two-foot wood lattice that we're requesting the commissioner's approval on. You can go to the next photo, Edith. Similarly, this is a view looking now west, and the top drawing is the wood lattice with the wood coining of the columns. The bottom section is the masonry wall at six feet with a two-foot wooden lattice topper that we're requesting approval on. Next photo. And this, these drawings are basically repetitive, but they show sections through the cantilevered stone balconies with the stone balustrades projecting into the yard. The top view's looking west, bottom view east, and then you go to the next slide. The photo on the left is the beige hotville limestone that the balconies and the staircase will be fabricated from, and you can see that relative to the facade of the coquina stone. And then what we're trying to also illustrate is the stone balusters in the, at the cornice level, what would be a cornice level, that are inspiring the design for the balconies on the grade level in the back. And you can go to the next photo. This is a 3D image, just to help everyone visualize the rear yard once again, and the elements that we're requesting approval on, the wood lattice topper, the two stone balconies from the limestone, and then the limestone staircase. And everything else is essentially approved at staff level or existing. Next photo. Okay, and I think that's, that wraps it up, trying to keep it concise.
And commissioners, if I may, just to kind of summarize this, so you know exactly what to comment on here. As was mentioned, the building is subject to a modification of use in bulk that predates this application, primarily related to the, I believe, the height of the penthouse and maybe some of the coverage on that as well, floor area. And, and as part of that, as is typical, the restoration of both the front facade and in large part the rear facade was included in that, in that package of work. And so what you're looking at today with regard to the work at the rear is really the, the metalwork balconies and the set of stairs, which, you know, we were considering appendages to the rear facade that was subject to the restoration work. The balconies, for certain, they seem to have a mixture of iron and I think some bronze castings that are similar to what is found on balcony in the front of the building, and also to some extent the, the metal stair, although I'm less certain about the exact age of that. So we're not looking at the rest of the rear yard work in conjunction with the restoration required by the special permit previously. It's really just the, the second part is just the technicality of the staff level rules do not allow a fence taller than six feet. And so that extra couple of feet they're looking for on the perimeter fence is sort of separate from the restoration work. So it's really those, those two, those two pieces that you're looking at today.
All right, thank you, Cory. And I think Commissioner Goldblum, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I think, I think you may have answered--
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think, I think you may have answered it, Corey, but just to be clear, the existing balconets and stair appear to be original?
The balconets do to us, and as mentioned, I think there's a detail shot in one of the sheets that showed the bronze castings within it that look an awful lot like the ones on the front of the building. The ironwork, railings, and the stairs themselves, I have not seen any, with any certainty that they're original, but they are in keeping with the other metalwork. So we're considering it that for now.
Mr. Ernst, is there a reason why you're proposing to replace these?
Really, it's, it's a kind of part of the overall redesign of the backyard to unify the materials.
So it's aesthetic, it's an aesthetic thing?
It is, it's not functional, and it's, it's really aesthetic and cosmetic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
This stair thread and riser, is it one piece? Or are you putting in a steel string and putting slabs into it?
Commissioner, that's an excellent question. There will be a steel undercarriage to support the stone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Okay, why don't we move to public testimony? And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to take us through the testimony. Okay, well, so it's friends of the Upper East Side, followed by John Graham. Laura, I brought you in, there you go.
Thank you. Laura Varelli, representing friends of the Upper East Side, Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners. This block was originally divided in the mid-1920s when the mid-block parcel was divided into seven row houses developed by developer Alfred Reinsting. And six of those homes were designed by Embry. The houses were complementary and shared a giant backyard kept open and free from rear extensions by deed restrictions, according to the late Christopher Gray. Gray also points out that the rear facades of these buildings were not utilitarian, and unlike the typical brownstone, each house had a fully-developed garden facade. At 45 East Seventieth Street, this takes the form of delicate and elegant details, clean lines, and minimal ornamentation. The existing ironwork is a textural refinement that works as a detail accent on this otherwise very subdued masonry facade, and represents an element of the front facade carried through the back of the building. Additionally, it is highly likely that the existing balconies, stairs, and railings are original to the building, as they are typical of Embry's aesthetic. They also appear in 1931 photos of the building. Finally, this commission also noted on a permit issue last year that the decorative ironwork railings and stair at the rear are extant. The proportions of the proposed balconies and soup are very heavy when compared to Embry's delicate design, resulting in an overbearing, bulky, and exaggerated addition. They're at odds with the building's style and would severely marj the integrity of the rear facade. Friends cannot support such drastic and damaging alterations. Additionally, we believe that their regular bluestone paving surrounded by greenery and the current partially transparent fence create a very welcoming garden and are an essential part of this peculiar, rare, and blissfully open block in New York City. With that in mind, we are concerned about the staff level alterations approved in October 2020. The replacement of the open lattice with a brick wall would completely obliterate Reinsting's vision of a large, shared space. The pavement mosaic is not compatible with the building's style, and we find the fountain to have an ostentatious air. Friends urges the commission to reject this proposal. It contradicts the original architect's intent, the style and character of the building, and the preservation maintenance plan approved in 2009. Over 10 years ago, the owner was allowed to overbuild in this limited high district on the condition that the building would be preserved and maintained as the landmark that it is. This proposal, including the alterations approved at staff level, goes directly against the goals set forward in the MOU. Finally, Friends kindly asks the commission to rethink the approval of the staff permit and require that the applicant preserve the intentional details of this highly-designed rear facade and open rear yard. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. And next, we have John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham from the Victorian Society in New York. 45 East Seventieth Street was constructed a few years outside the period of concern for the Victorian Society. But we're going to comment today, first, because this mansion is so very similar to others of this type built in this historic district just a few years earlier. Second, because the proposed alterations at the rear facade speak to the commission's mandate to preserve all of the significant historic elements on a designated building. And third, because one of our reviewers has written permits for the building. The VSNY recommends denial of the proposal to replace historic ironwork and fencing at the rear garden. Commissioners, 45 East Seventieth Street is one of those rare mansions on the Upper East Side, which was constructed on a double lock. This allowed the original architect to design a garden-facing facade without an L, which is just as formal and carefully detailed as the street facade. You could pick up 45 East Seventieth Street, spin it 180 degrees, put it back down with the rear facing the street, and in no way diminish the character of this block. Finally, the building has had a very small number of owners who have been careful stewards, resisting any temptation to rebuild or extend the garden facade. One of the important elements which links these two facades is their ironwork. The design of the balconet over the principal entrance and the balconets and railings at the rear are of a piece, a perfect example of the way a skilled designer can play with themes and variations. If you remove one of these elements, you diminish all of them. The lightness and transparency of this ironwork also help open up the rear garden. The proposed balconets and garden steps have no relationship to the historic facades, replacing transparency with bulk. The front facade does have stone balustrades, but they are placed at the parapet, where one can see them, see through them to the sky. The stone balustrades the applicant is proposing just block views of the historic masonry. The replacement of the existing garden fencing is a less egregious alteration, though it doesn't seem evidence that it was part of the original architect's design. However, because its design is a much better complement to the original, the VSNY recommends retaining the existing garden fencing. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised. All right, thank you. And Rich, do we have any additional written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Eight. They recommended denial citing concerns over the use of French marble as too heavy a material for the balconies and overwhelming metalwork and masonry at the rear.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ernst, would you like to address or respond to any of the comments that we've heard in testimony?
Well, I appreciate the comments, and, you know, I do understand them. And I have to say, I've read through the MOU quite a number of times, and I don't see specifically where it mentions the back of the house. But I do agree that I think the balconies are original to the design and the construction of the house. I am skeptical that the stairs are, based on the construction of the tread material, which is a much more modern material. And I have a feeling that was replaced at some point after the house was constructed. And lastly, I want to say that the design of the rear yard itself is, is not historic. The lattice fencing is actually recently constructed, and it's actually not that great, you know, as far as its construction and quality. And I do understand that when these houses were designed, that the context was such that it was all structures of, you know, consistent scale and level of detail. But at this point, the rear yard of this house in the block is flanked by, in many cases, much taller pre-war, and I think in some cases, post-war, co-op buildings. So there has been an evolution around this building. And I do feel strongly that the MOU was an excellent tool to protect this building in perpetuity and moving forward. But I do feel like that there are certain elements that could be and should be subject to change and, and further evolution. And, you know, like I said, I agree with some of the comments, but, you know, some of this is subjective, frankly. And that's really all I have to say, because there's nothing, you know, I can't be on having technical evidence of, of things existing, which there is not, there's not much else for me to say.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final, final questions? No, okay. All right, so I'm going to start to unmute or request to unmute you so that we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Luthfield, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion, which is, is, you know, we said focusing on the replacement of the stair and the iron balconets with these new limestone features and the extension of the walls. And Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you start this one for us?
Sure. You know, I, you can see from the photographs and just from the detailing that the rear facade was definitely designed, the design facade, and not, not just a utilitarian facade, obviously, because it has the shared, shared yard as well. And it appears that the balconets are original, as they match the balcony on the front of the building. So I can't support the removal of that original fabric. The stairs, it is not as clear as whether those are original, but I, I think they're more appropriate than the proposed limestone, which seems very heavy and out of place on this, on this very delicately detailed facade. So I think that it could possibly support a different metal design if that's, if that's desired, but I don't think the stone is appropriate.
Okay.
You know, the perimeter walls have already been approved by staff, so we, we're not really...
We're just looking at the extensions on top, the two-foot extensions on top.
Yeah, I think that those are, those are probably, those are fine.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the extension of the wall for privacy reasons or whatever. But I also find that the, particularly in the rendering, but just in general, that those, it looks very heavy, both the balconets and the, and the, you know, there. So I think it should remain metal, and, I mean, it looks that they're original, certainly those should remain. And I agree with Commissioner Holford-Smith that either we should have a new design or just retain the existing metal railings for the stair. As far as the treads, the applicant said those were new, they need to replace those, it's fine to replace those, but it should be a much lighter look to this, to this, which would originally, to comply, to be in accord with what the obvious original design was in this case, which actually looks better than putting a heavier design in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with everything Ann said. The only suggestion that I would make that, that I would consider, I don't know if everyone else would, I think that if, if the applicant has, has a problem with the stairs for performance reasons, I think it'd be okay to do limestone stairs for the stairs, but not for the rail. The rail were lighter and were iron, even if the stairs were made out of stone, I think that that would be, that would maintain the lightness that they're, that they're, that is there now and that is the character of the facade.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Ann Holford-Smith said exactly what I was thinking. So the balconet stays, the metal stair stays, I'm okay with the extension of the fence.
Okay. Commissioner Luthfield?
I agree. I'm in that camp.
All right. Commissioner Jefferson?
I think the metal railings are beautiful. I agree with Commissioner Ann. It should be metal.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson? Can you hear? I think we've lost him. All right, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I sort of could believe in and find appropriate these, the stone balconets as well as the stair, but I just, I think it's missing, it's missing the kind of the combination that this, of the stylistic, that this building kind of has, which is both, it's kind of deco, there's a little Greek revival in it, there's, you know, there's this kind of very shallow detailing, and I, and belief, and I just think that the, the whole, the language of this, of, of the balustrades as well as the cheek walls, is somehow not quite getting it. And so, you know, I, I would not be against changing those, those original, and in some cases, not so original, elements, but I just don't think that what's being proposed is quite right yet. So I would say that work needs to be done on it.
Okay. All right, so I think we certainly don't have the votes to approve the replacement of the balconets or the stairs today, although there have been some suggestions about the stairs. So, but I think there's a consensus to support the extend, lattice extension. So I'm going to suggest that we make a motion to approve the lattice extensions and take no act, and, and disapprove the removal of balcony, but take no action on the stairs. And that way, the applicant, if they wish to just keep the existing stairs, can move on with their approval of the extensions on the walls. And if they wish to come back with a different design, they can do that as well and come back to a public meeting. So I'll go ahead and make this motion, now that I can, I closed out my comments, but let me just pull them up again. All right. In the matter of docket number 2104173, 45 East Seventieth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District, a neo-French classic-style mansion designed by Amar Embry II and built in 1928 to 29, this is an application to replace decorative metal balconies, stairs, and railings, and alter the perimeter fence at the rear yard. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the historic district, and that further notes that the building is subject to the requirements of a higher level of restoration related to its MOU special permit status. And I recommend approval of the lattice work, finding that the proposed work is not visible from a public thoroughfare, that the installation of the two-foot-high lattice fence on top of the six-foot-high perimeter fence will be transparent in design and consistent with typical features found at rear yards. However, I find that the historic metal balconets at the first-floor windows are highly ornate and match the details found at the decorative ironwork located at the front facade, and their replacement would eliminate significant historic fabric, and therefore recommend that the decorative metal balconets be retained at the rear facade. And I move that we take no action on the step stairs, and the applicant can think about our comments and choose to propose something in response to those comments if they wish to. And with that, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second the motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Who seems to have left. Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson, who I also believe left of the day. Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, so that's a approval in part, sort of approval of modifications and, and in part, and the no action. And so please continue to talk to the staff about your next steps. So with that, thank you. That's the conclusion of our day. Thank you all for a very long day. And your, as always, your dedication and commitment and thoughtful comments and to all of our projects and the impact you have on our city. So thank you all, and have a good night.